Good evening. Hi, please have you bring your voices down to inside voices, please, thank you. And no one can remain in the middle aisle for safety reasons, so please find a seat.
If you could offer any suggestions?
Well, if you have a vacant seat next to you, please raise your hand so this gentleman can find a seat. Great. Anyone who has a vacant seat will raise your hand. There you go, sir. Ma'am, do you need help finding a seat?
No.
Okay. All right. Good evening, my name is Vicki Walker and I am the Director of the Department of State Lands. The folks that are signing you up and helping around the room are folks from my staff, and we've had a long week. This is our fourth hearing this week. We have one more next Tuesday. I'd like to think that this audience is going to be a great audience tonight. I'm going to get to the rules because I'm going to be really, really strict about the rules. I'm just going to tell you right now, I'm a coastie. I graduated high school in Reed'sport. My father still lives here, my mother passed away two years ago, but my father still lives here and I had lunch with him today. I understand your passion, I understand your viewpoints, and they vary widely, but I also understand that you are kind to your neighbors and I need you to respect that tonight and remember that as I go through the rules. It's going to be very, very important. So we're here to take your testimony, your comments about the removal of fill application for the proposed Jordan Cove Energy Project. The information that you provide to us tonight is essential, absolutely essential, to help us understand your views and how this application impacts you. Input is used to determine what additional information the applicant may be required to provide, what issues may need to be addressed by the applicant, and ultimately to inform the permit decision that I will make, not the Governor, not anyone else. This is a decision by the agency, by the department. So with the consultation of my highly skilled technical staff, we are reviewing every single comment and we will be making a decision about this particular application. And I really want to thank you for being here. I know many of you wear your heart on your sleeve, just like I do, and so your comments are just so incredibly powerful. Before I review the ground rules, I want to talk to you about exactly what this permit application is. Because some come here thinking it's about something else, so let me just make sure we all know what that's all about. The removal fill program protects Oregon's water resources. Projects that propose removing or filling materials in waters and wetlands are required to obtain a removal fill permit from this department, the Department of State Lands. Anyone that wants to remove or fill anything has to give a permit. That's what we're here for. And we use those permits as an opportunity to determine if there are any adverse potential impacts. The proposed Jordan Cove Energy Project is proposing removal fill activities. They have to obtain a permit. The permit, however, is one of multiple permits and approvals and authorizations that this applicant is going to need. So this is not the last stop. This just happens to be the first stop because we're the only state agency that had an application that was complete enough to send it out for public comment. The public comment and review period is an opportunity for you, as I mentioned, to evaluate the proposed project and to decide whether the proposed mitigation is sufficient to offset any anticipated effects. And I just heard a cellphone go off, and that is one of the rules. That is number three. So I haven't gone over the rules yet, but while we're talking about it, if you could please all look at your cellphones and click them on mute. That would be really awesome. The proposed Jordan Cove Energy Project is also required to obtain authorization from this department for a variety of project components, not just removal fill. They need permits from us for easement to bridges, pipelines, river crossings, stormwater outflows, crossings on state-owned land, leasing and registration for work certifications, and data movies, authorizations and easements for mitigation sites, and a sand and gravel license for the proposed access channel. That's a lot of stuff. That's a high bar. So your comments are really important. The comment period for those things that I just mentioned varies. We don't have applications for those things yet, but when we do, it'll be posted on our website and we will let you know if and when there is an opportunity for public comment. Now, I want to talk a little bit about our hearing tonight. My goal will all be is to ensure that we have a safe, productive forum for you to comment on this application, and that's why I'm very strict about rules. I've been calling a few names, I've had some people get angry, but I'm going to stick to the rules and we're going to get through this hearing tonight so that all of you have a chance to talk. We hope to hear from as many of you as possible, but at two minutes apiece, we're seeing that we're only getting about 65 people. Some people don't testify for their two minutes, they testify for a minute. We've also had people who showed up at multiple hearings, and last night I made the decision that anyone who has testified previously will go to the bottom of the list, no matter if you got in line first. And that's to be fair. There are so many of you that have come to these hearings and haven't had an opportunity to testify. We also prioritize anyone over 65 and any disabled folks. One night, however, I had so many seniors over 65 that I had to sort of space that out, and I'm one of those. I'm 62. According to the World Health Organization, I'm considered elderly. But I just mix in our seniors as we go along so that we can get you through with your priority number. We will close the hearing promptly at eight, and I watch that very carefully. And after the last person testifies, I'll have a few comments about what to accept next. So let's go over the rules. Standing room only is around the room and single, single person deep, can't have you stacked up back there. No one in the middle. You needed to sign up to speak. Be respectful of each other. Assume they're your neighbor or your family. Please be respectful. Silence your cellphones. No signs, banners, placards, wags, or anything else allowed in this room. Your t-shirts and your hats are perfectly fine. I just don't want any signs. Lending your comments to two minutes. Do not disrupt speakers. I got really upset last night. Someone hissed in the middle of somebody's testimony, and I found that to be the most rude response that I've seen all week. There won't be any clapping, there won't be any noise. You can raise your hands and do this, you can put a thumb up or a thumb down, but the first person who utters a word out loud of noise-making or clapping or anything else, I will ask you to leave. I will ask you to leave, and if you do not leave, and this is the part you're going to get a little crunchy with me, but if you don't leave when I ask you to, I will close the hearing. And then it's on you as that person who closed the hearing and prevented all these other great people from testifying. So please, if I hear you make noise and clap or shout or do anything, if you're confrontational with anyone, I'll ask you to leave, and please do so politely. Be a respectful audience member, that's all I ask, and we're going to get through so many people that way. Ensure that others have the opportunity to speak, so as was mentioned earlier, this room is at full capacity. When you come up to speak and you finish, I'm going to ask that you exit so that other people can come in and testify. So we are hosting these meetings to accept your comments in person, but I value your comments on paper, on email, boy, you're sending me a lot of those, by fax. However you send your comments, they're as important to me as you being here at the table tonight. So if I have to close the hearing, which I hope I don't have to do, don't worry, I will hear your comments because you can submit them in writing. Ann, can you show us a yellow comment form? A yellow comment form is in the back, and we have some up here. Bill is waving his hand. He's in the middle of the room in the very back. He will take your comments. Question cards are green. If you have a question that comes up, excuse me, if you have a question when you come up here as you're testifying, sometimes we recognize that as a question, and Ann will take down and write your question. Any questions that come up, fill out a comment card, give it to Bill in the back or us here when you testify. We will answer those questions later. We don't have time for that tonight, but we will answer any questions that you give to us, and those will be posted on our website. So I have nothing else on that. I just now want to ask you, is there any question about the rules? Any question? Yes, in the back, ma'am? Yes.
Are questions or comments complying strictly to the dredging removal of fill, or is it a broader scope?
Okay, good question. The question is, are comments, are comments just simply to be about the dredging and the removal of fill, or can they be broader in scope? The answer is, they can be as broad as you want. I can just tell you that our hearing tonight is about removal of fill permit, so if it's broader in scope and we read the comment and it does not apply to this permit, we probably won't be considering it, but we will read. Does that answer your question? Okay, great. Any other questions? I thought I saw, yes, ma'am?
Let me speak just out of respect for everybody in this hearing. Is it okay if you face everyone as you speak?
She wanted to know if you could face, if she could face you while she speaks, and I'm so sorry, I have to say no. And the reason is, do you see this kind of outer spacey looking microphone in the front? You need to speak into that because it's being recorded on Ann's computer, and all of the recorded testimony tonight is going to be transcribed, and it will be written testimony and it'll be on our website. So when you turn away from that, we can't hear it. Okay? All right. Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Would we be allowed to wave our hats in support of a speaker?
I would prefer you not wave the hat. Thank you for asking. Just putting your hands up, and I can't do that because, thank you, Ann will demonstrate. Put your hands up, your fingers, this is hard of hearing people, use that as a sign of applause, so that would be the best way to do it, but when you start waving hats, I don't think that's a good idea. So thank you for asking. Question in the far back?
Are stickers considered political banners and signs?
Stickers on your shirt?
No, stickers get passed out.
Stickers, if they go on your clothing, you're holding onto them, no, I don't want to see them in the air. If you want to put a sticker on your shirt, you don't object, but if you hold a sticker up, that becomes a sign.
Thank you.
Okay? Anything else?
I've got one in the back right now.
Way back there, yes, ma'am?
I didn't completely understand about the green question cards, where you get them to be filled out tonight, did you turn them in tonight, and you have them on your website?
Okay, I think I heard you. You wanted to know about the green question card. Yes, you get them tonight, Ann has one, and Bill has them in the back. You fill it out tonight, Bill's waving it and he's in the middle, in the very back, and you fill it out, and we will answer the question and post it on our website. Is that what you're looking for? Okay, good. Any other questions? Okay, I've got some staff around the room I need you to be aware of. I can't really see them because there's too many people here, but in the back, oh, Bob, he's tall. Bob Lobdell is waving his hand, he's back there with Eric Metz. They are the expert staff, technical staff on this project, so if you have questions about this permit, please go to them. Jordan Cove has its folks here on this side, wave guys. They're here to answer questions. They are the applicant, so it's appropriate that they are here to answer your questions. And, excuse me, those of you who signed up, Malia is back there, and Mark Wagman is next to Malia, and Ann, and then Ally, they're all bringing me lists. So those are all the folks. So I'm going to ask at this time if we have any tribal chiefs, tribal chairs, or any elected officials in the audience. Scott Wheat, are you here?
I am.
Oh, there you are, you're behind me. Okay. If you're testifying and you come forward, you're representing the tribe.
Certainly.
Okay? Former Secretary of State Bill Bradbury, and Katie Iman, would you come forward? I'm going to actually have them here first.
Oh, okay.
Scott Wheat will be next. And so Bill and Katie, here, Bill. Are there any other elected officials in the room? I see someone's hand up. Are you an elected official, sir? And you haven't yet signed up, but come forward. You are one of the lucky ones.
I'm going to ask that you guys spell real loud.
And I'm a former elected official too. We work hard to become elected officials, and they work hard for you, so they deserve this opportunity. Malia, yes? Okay, okay. I need you to just come up front and have your seat next. All right, so we have one, two, three, we have eight chairs tonight, so I'll call up eight people at a time. As you come up and testify, once you, as they go up, I will motion you forward. Do not come back here unless I call you forward. You had some trouble at one hearing, people were behind me and I was very uncomfortable, so you need to stay out here. As people move to the testimony table, you'll move yourself down, and I'll interrupt at some point and call up more people. We just want to keep it rolling and rolling so that we don't waste any time moving people in and out. We also have a two-minute warning. You have two minutes to testify, and Ann, show what that looks like. You'll get a one-minute warning, and a lot of you read and aren't looking, so Ann will kind of gently try to put that in front of you so that you see that you've got a one-minute. When she flips it over and says, "Your time's up," please stop, because if you don't, I got to let other people continue to talk, and only two minutes is all we've got. Okay, I think that pretty much gets where I need to be. The restrooms are located outside the room, I'm not sure where, I usually get briefed on that, but they're right outside the door, I'm sure you can find them, and also...
They're outside the door and to the right.
Outside the door and to the right.
There is some signage that shows that.
Okay. And finally, I want to tell you that we are renting this facility from the Coquell Indian Tribe. The Coquell Tribe has not taken a position openly to be that they either support or don't support this project. We are simply renting this facility from the Coquell Tribe, and I really appreciate that. So please, be respectful. They have a casino operation out there. Don't go out there and hang out and talk and be obnoxious. Just let's be careful, okay? All right, with that, we are going to start. So I've got one, two, three more seats, so I'm going to call up Jody McCaffrey, Frank Smith, and Mike Williams. You'll come up here and you'll be on deck. And Mr. Bradbury, you need to state your name, spell it, tell us where you live, and then your two minutes will start. Thank you.
Thank you, Director...
Hold on a second. Testing? Testing?
Thank you, Director Walker. I'm Bill Bradbury, B-I-L-L-B-R-A-D-B-U-R-Y, and I'm the former Oregon Secretary of State and a state legislator from right here on the southern Oregon coast, and I currently reside in Banden, Oregon. And I'm here today to express my strong opposition to the Jordan Cove liquefied natural gas export facility. There are lots of reasons to be opposed, but I want to focus on climate impacts. I've spent the last 12 years traveling all over the state, both as a Secretary of State and as a member of the Northwest Power and Conservation Council, educating Oregonians about the impacts of climate change. I've made over 500 presentations about both global and local impacts of climate change. Now, we're very lucky to live here in the northwest. We will be impacted by climate change, but a whole lot less than places like Texas. By the end of the century, many won't be able to live in Texas. Droughts, hurricanes, rainstorms will add up to make Texas mostly unlivable. In Oregon, the largest single source of greenhouse gases currently is the Bortman Coal Plant. Bortman is closing in two years, in 2020, and we can be glad about that closure, but greenhouse gases from the Jordan Cove LNG export facility and pipeline will become the largest source of greenhouse gases in Oregon. The largest source of greenhouse gases in Oregon. We and the Oregon climate don't need the greenhouse gases from Jordan Cove LNG export facility. It is not in the public interest. This project is not in the public interest, so it does not meet the requirements for the Division of State Lands permit.
Thank you.
Nope.
Hello, my name is Katie Iman, spelled K-A-T-Y, and the last name is E-Y-M-A-N-N, and I live in Banden, Oregon, in Coos County. I want to thank you for coming here and listening to all of us about our concerns about the Jordan Cove project. I want to say, in addition to thank you, that many people here are disappointed because they were told the doors would open at 5:15 so they could sign up to testify, instead when they arrived, they found out the doors had opened at 4 o'clock and there was already a long line of people to testify, and therefore, many of those people who came to testify will not be able to testify because they were at the end of the line. So I just want to express their disappointment, and they will all be submitting written testimony. Also, the venue should be larger to accommodate the many people. As to this permit, I recently was a candidate for Coos County Commissioner, and I worked very hard at that endeavor and knocked on over 1,500 doors of people in Coos County and spoke with those people. And I would oftentimes, I'm almost always brought up the Jordan Cove project, and many people told me, well, isn't that the project that's going to hire all those out-of-towners and make rents rise for us, and make it really expensive to live here? And I had to agree that that was true. There, in terms of the public benefit, there's no long-term economic benefit despite what Jordan Cove says, because people who live here are going to face skyrocketing rental costs, and all the people that, all the jobs it created will then go away and there will be very few left. And in addition, what will be left will be a loss of the clamming, crabbing, and fishing that people in this area so treasure, and because they, is a big source of why they have their friends come here, and it's also a big source of economic benefit for the crabbing, clamming, and fishing that will be hurt by this project. So I thank you very much. I urge the Division of State Lands to deny this permit. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Katie, and I want to respond to your comment about the four p.m. opening. I am sorry, the venue requested that we open the doors at four because there was no place for people to line up, and they were lining up on the casino floor. So we had to make that adjustment, and I apologize.
Okay. Come on up. You can move that chair back.
I'm a lefty, so it might work better for me.
Whatever side you prefer, you just go for it. Okay, Scott, since you're here, let me get started.
Good evening, my name is Scott Wheat. I am the General Counsel for the Confederated Tribes of Cooslo, Ramkwa, and Tsayuslo. I'm here at the request and on behalf of the Tribal Council.
There you go.
For the Confederated Tribes. Boy, I rarely get told to speak up. I just want to preface these remarks by letting you all know we will be submitting detailed written testimony, you know, prior to the deadline for doing so. You all are probably aware that the tribe is neutral on this project, but we're very much an advocate and we're very much for protection of tribal resources. That includes cultural resources and natural resources. We have met with the applicant, and we've negotiated a cultural resources protection agreement with the applicant. And certainly, the applicant is committed to us, that they are, you know, fully committed to protecting our cultural and natural resources, to do right by those resources. You know, as much as we love to trust people, we also like to verify. And so for us, part of DSL's role here is to hold the applicant accountable for the commitments that it makes. The devil's, the devil's always in the details, and that's certainly true with a project of this magnitude. As you're aware, DSL has a very important duty set out by statute to make a determination whether the project is consistent with the protection, conservation, and best use of the water resources of the state, whether the project is the practicable alternative with the least adverse impacts on the water resources, and three, the project does not unreasonably interfere with the preservation of waters for navigation, fishing, or public recreation. DSL is also required to review the public need for the project, the economic cost to the public, public health and safety, compatibility with existing land uses, and propose mitigation for impacts to waterways. So let's get right into potential impacts that we think the department should be mindful of when considering this application. Front and center, potential impacts to cultural resources. The, you know, Coos Bay, you know, it's the namesake of the Coos Tribe, of course. This bay, you can't turn a shovel without finding cultural resources of the tribe. We don't want to oppose the project, but we need to know that our resources are going to be protected. When it comes to DSL, in our view, there are cultural resources in the water in Coos Bay. On this submerged lands in the bay is the most extensive and well-preserved fishware system in the United States, hands down. It's a crown jewel of the cultural resources for this state, and we implore DSL to be very mindful of that resource when considering this application. We would also like DSL to keep in mind that there are, you know, a multitude of state archaeological resource protection laws, which very well may be triggered here, as well as Policy 18, which is a local Coos Bay land use policy. I'm being told we're out of time, so I just want to very briefly touch on a couple other substance affairs we'd like...
Time's up.
I'm sorry.
All right, well, thank you.
Do you want me to say it into the mic?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Jessica Engelke, E-N-G-E-L-K-E. I'm a longtime resident of Coos County and an elected official of North Bend. I'm a daughter of a union worker, I'm a business teacher, and I'm a mom of two young girls who I'm hoping there are jobs for in this community when they finish school. I myself am a union member, and I support union jobs. I also support responsible jobs in our community. Growing up in Coos County in the '70s and the '80s, I have witnessed firsthand the devastating issues a community faces when there are a lack of jobs, low tax base, and a lack of funding for schools. It would be interesting to me to see, just by fingers in the air, of other people in this room who are local, who also saw those effects of those devastating issues that we had in the '70s and the '80s when jobs were gone. The Jordan Cove Project will build a safe, clean, reliable natural gas pipeline and a liquefied natural gas export terminal that will create more than 6,000 family wage jobs during construction, and an estimated 8,500 spinoff jobs in hospitality, retail, tourism, and... and, so important, healthcare. I have two daughters that will be graduating from high school right when the project would be expected to be completed, and I know that if this happens, they will be able to see a boost in the economy, and we can continue to grow this area. The positive impact that this project would have on our local economy is very promising for not only my generation, but many generations to come. Jordan Cove has also gone above and beyond to design the project to minimize environmental impacts. In fact, their salmon habitat restoration project is incredible and will bring our salmon runs back to healthy and sustainable levels. So please take that into consideration when you are reviewing your permit. Thank you.
Perfect timing. Thank you. Well?
I'll take your orange card, please. And then just remember to spell your last name and minimum age.
I'm John Barton, J-O-N. Second word, Barton.
John.
Okay.
Go, please.
Okay, is that better? Oh, sorry about that. I'm rarely told to talk louder. Anyway, I'm John Barton, J-O-N-B-A-R-T-O-N. I will be very brief today. Oh, I am a resident of the Coos Bay, North Bend area. I actually live in Hauser. My post office box is in Coos Bay, so I'm sort of everywhere. Anyway, I will be brief today. I'm here primarily to talk to you a little bit about some of the comments I've heard and read regarding aquaculture, specifically oysters. I have a long association with the oyster business here in the bay, and, pardon me, I'm happy to tell you that there really is no significant impact on oysters.
Back to Paul.
Oh, sorry. There is no significant impact on oysters. The pipeline goes under the bay at significant depths. The dredge and fill operation is really, in this case, limited to taking out, I think, about four kinks in the, in the channel and widening it a little bit. It wouldn't be any, really any material difference from what the routine judging is done by the Corps to keep the channel open. That's about all I have to say.
All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
My name is Jody McCaffrey, J-O-D-Y-M-C-C-A-F-F-R-E-E. I am a lifetime resident of North Bend. The construction and operation of the Jordan Cove Pacific Connector Project is entirely dependent on the issuance of an order for authorization under the Natural Gas Act by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. FERC is responsible for the completion of an environmental impact statement. By processing this removal fill permit prior to the completion of the EIS process, the DSL is committing agency resources for a preferred LNG terminal siting location and pipeline route alternative prior to the final alternative selection by the FERC. This violates the National Environmental Policy Act, the Coastal Zone Management Act, the Federal Water Pollution Control Act, and 40 CFR 1502.1 and 40 CFR 1502.2F, along with other laws. This DSL application should be denied due to there are better alternative sites and designs that are not being investigated by DSL. State and federally listed species will be negatively impacted. Archaeological and historical sites will be negatively impacted. Water resources and habitat areas will be negatively impacted. The Jordan Cove Project and LNG tankers place 17,000 people in the Coos Bay area in hazardous burn zones and will unreasonably interfere with navigation, fishing, and public recreation. The project's mitigation is insufficient to compensate for the adverse impacts. The project is not in compliance with local land use regulations and plans, has not obtained their land use permits as required, and are processing land use permit applications right now, including applications for altering zoning in the Coos Estuary by signing forms stating that they have been given authority to do so by the Oregon Department of State Lands. Has the DSL already given Jordan Cove this kind of authority? Many of the areas that Jordan Cove wants to dredge or fill in the Estuary are in zoning districts that do not allow for new dredge or fill. Jordan Cove will need to change the zoning, which they are currently trying to do, and those hearing processes are conflicting with the DSL process, and that is not right. I am asking that there be an investigation into these matters and a cease and desist order issued.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. And, sir, can you wait for a minute?
Absolutely.
I'm going to call up some more people.
Yeah, please.
Sir, you want to come up?
Okay, I've got room for six more up front, please. Gary Mangan, Sylvia Mangan, and if I get your pronunciation wrong, please, I apologize. Cameron Langley, Isabella Tibbetts, Kathy Dawes, Candace Chat, and I think one more, Suzanne Robbins.
Welcome.
Thank you very much. Thanks to DSL for holding this forum, and thanks to the tribe for hosting it. My name is Frank Smith. I live in the forest near Florence. I've been subjected to difficulties with the reckless resource extraction industry for many decades. I think that clean energy in the context of what we're talking about with this project, the whole project, is an oxymoron. I don't believe it. I was in Santa Barbara, I mean, I'm sorry, I was in California when Santa Barbara had their huge oil spill in 1969. I moved to Marin County, and PG&E was trying to build on a stride the San Andreas Fault of Vodega Bay. I was in Alaska, unfortunately, on Easter Sunday in 1989, when the Exxon Valdez struck a reef with a drunken captain. I, the pipeline from the north slope to Valdez was shot by a drunk with a high-powered rifle and discharged hundreds of thousands of gallons of oil. You can imagine if that was methane. Methane, unrestricted, will find ignition. That's an engineer told me that. Inevitably will find ignition. I moved to southern Kansas on the Oklahoma border in 1999, and in 2013, we started experiencing earthquakes. The first one, I thought, was a drill pad for frackers located a mile north of our house. We were living very rural, with the nearest neighbors a mile away, and it sounded like an explosion, and we called USGS, and they said that the epicenter of this earthquake was beneath our house, specifically, when they asked for our address, beneath our house. The earthquakes were only part of the problems that the frackers brought to us. They killed our dogs, they tore our roads up, they damaged our bridges, they blocked the roads with overturned semi-trailers, plural, taking corners too fast in frosty weather. The earthquakes did $1.6 million toward 1906 up?
Yes, sir.
Oh, didn't seem like two minutes, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Especially when you're passionate. Thank you, sir.
I could go on. Thank you.
There are, I need to remind folks that it's single person deep at the wall, so thank you, Mr., if you could scoot up against the wall, that'd be great. If you have a vacant seat next to you, could you raise your hand, please, so anyone that's standing has a place to sit? Look at all those great seats.
I have a bunch in the front row.
And we have quite a few in the front row, so find a place to sit if you like. Thank you, sir.
Yes, my name's Michael Williams, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S, and I'm here to ask the Oregon Department of State Wetlands to deny the permit. To deny the permit, not one person from OSW has asked to see the property. I have three wells on that that serve seven houses. I was told by DEQ I could only dig my septic system 24 inches deep as it would disturb the aquifer, and I don't understand how they can allow them to dig nine feet. Any deeper would affect the water. Of the wildlife, it would be affected bad. We have a pond registered with the State of Oregon on our property that they want to go right through the end of it. There's otter, geese, and a snowy egret that nests there every year. My third great-grandfather was a patriot, listed as a patriot in this company and country, and I don't think it's right that a Canadian company could eminent domain an American citizen. Thank you, I'd like to relinquish the rest of my time to this gentleman.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Larry, L-A-R-R-Y, Mannan. Ms. Walker, thank you very much.
Spell your last name first, sir.
Thank you very much for coming to the Coos Bay area to hear our concerns. We really appreciate it. My wife Sylvia and I have lived here now for more than 30 years. We own a small ranch along Haynes Inlet and have raised our two children here. Sylvia will testify on how dredge and fill activities of the proposed pipeline will affect our ranch, wetlands, and threatened Coho salmon, and how we could face the taking of our ranch to eminent domain. I will talk a little on how the proposal will affect recreational activities. For many years, our family crabbed and clammed in areas that are now being proposed for dredging. We typically would launch our boats at the Empire docks or at the BLM boat ramp out on the North Spit and set traps for dungeonous crab along both sides of the navigation channel. Those recreational activities will now be prevented or curtailed by the proposed dredging. The habitat will be degraded, at least temporarily, during the time dredging is ongoing, up to four years. The dredging will not only affect crabbing, but also clamming and fishing. We feel that this proposed project is an unreasonable curtailment of the crabbing, clamming, and fishing recreational opportunities in Coos Bay, and will have a significant or adverse effect on the tourism dollars brought into this community. Recreational fishing brings in about $68 million to Oregon annually. The purpose of the dredging, the operation of the export LNG facility, will also have an unreasonable effect on recreational crabbing, clamming, and fishing as large tankers approach and depart the area. In fact, the LNG tankers will have a disastrous effect on the commercial dungeonous crabbing in Coos Bay, because these large tankers with their 500-meter buffers will hog the high tides and make it more difficult and dangerous, as unfortunately, we know all too well how dangerous crabbing is these days, dangerous for the crabbers and fishers to exit and enter the bay. The dungeonous crab industry brings in more than $150 million a year to Oregon. We feel that the proposed project will unreasonably affect the recreational and commercial fishing industry by adversely impacting habitat and by unreasonably interfering with the navigation in the bay. Consequently, we ask you to deny the permit for dredge and fill for the Jordan Cove project. Thank you very much.
This has been furthered.
Better half.
My name is Sylvia Mangan, and I'm a resident of North Bend. Ms. Walker, thank you for coming to the Coos Bay area to hear our concerns about the Division of State Lands removal fill permit for the proposed Jordan Cove project. I am here today because my husband and I own a small ranch in Coos County that could be affected by two alternatives of the Pacific Gas Connector Pipeline. About eight years ago, we completed a wetland restoration project on our property to offset the loss of wetlands that occurred during the Southwest Oregon Regional Airport's widening of their taxiway. This amazing wetland restoration project on our property was designed to create salt and freshwater marshes and Coho salmon over winter habitat. On our property, the proposed pipeline will pass directly through a spring and perennial creek that feeds this Coho salmon habitat. Several large conifers and deciduous trees will have to be removed before the pipe would then cross through about 1,800 feet of wetlands, the same creek for a second time, before it would go through our dike and out into the tidal wetlands of Haynes Inlet. This pipeline intrusion will muddy the creek in two places and rip 100-foot wide strip through our wetlands and unreasonably affect the Coho salmon and their habitat in the dedicated conservation easement on our ranch. There are many more impacts to state's water resources and us by this pipeline, including the possible threat of our property being taken through the process of eminent domain. We are puzzled how the Division of State Lands can consider a permit for this project when the entire route of the pipeline will not even be known until the FERC completes the EIS and record of decision. Consequently, we ask the DSL to stop this permit process until the actual route is known and can be accurately analyzed. If not, we can only ask that this permit be denied with prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. What is her name? Make sure that you speak at the end of it. I want you to speak out there.
Is it working?
Yeah, it's working.
Okay.
There you go.
My name is Cameron Langley. I'm a local youth. My name is Cameron Langley. I'm a local youth activist and organizer, and I'm just going to read off of my public comment for today. Oh, and, C-A-M-E-R-O-N-L-A-N-G-L-E-Y. I'm concerned about the following impacts. In the special report by the IPCC on global warming of 1.5 degrees Celsius versus 2 point, or 2 degrees Celsius, it is stated that pathways limiting global warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius with no or limited overshoot would require rapid and far-reaching transitions in energy, land, urban, and infrastructure, including transport and buildings, and industrial systems. These systems transitions are unprecedented in terms of scale, but not necessarily in terms of speed, and imply deep emissions reductions in all sectors. Liquified natural gas is predominantly methane, which is the most potent greenhouse gas, and Oil Change International has reported that the Jordan Cove Energy Project would be the largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in the state of Oregon. We should not be willing to exacerbate climate change just to give southern Oregon a short-term economic boost. What if LNG becomes obsolete in the near future? What is the deconstruction process of the pipeline? It is very possible that within a decade or two, we'll be making transitions off of fossil fuels. So how does it make sense to build an export facility and pipeline now? Our area may need help economically, but I don't believe that fossil fuels are the way to revitalize our area. Tourists came here, or come here for the natural beauty and the community, and that's where we should focus our revitalization. We should be forging a green, innovative future for ourselves, and Pembina should go back to Alberta. We, as a species, are facing the massive threat of climate change and should not continue to add to it. I strongly oppose this project, and the Oregon Department of State Lands should deny the removal fill permit. Thank you.
Thank you again. And if you could hold on, I'm going to call some more people up. All right.
I'm going to call up five more people. You're writing me a note, Anne.
Yes, ma'am. Steve Jensen is going to make the decision.
Elected official Steve Jensen. Could you come forward, please? Jamie Faraday, Anna Helms, Isa, or Isa Helms, oh, I hope I didn't butcher that. Raquel Cheney. I think that's it. Oh, I called one too many. Can you take this, a seat? Well, actually, you can stand if you like, or wait. She's going to be done in two minutes.
Here we go. We got one.
Awesome, ma'am. Thank you, audience. I love it. Now, if you can't hear, raise your hand when people are testifying. We have to have you get really close to the microphone, because they want to hear all the wonderful things that you're saying. And if you can't hear, you let me know.
All right, you have the microphone. All right. Thank you.
My name is Isabella Tibbetts, I-S-A-B-E-L-L-A-T-I-B-B-E-T-T-S. I come before you as an indigenous Quechua woman of Ecuador, South America, who for the last 26 years has made the Rogue Valley her home. I'm calling on you to deny this project and permit. As you saw from the outcome of Jackson County, we are strongly opposed of this project. This project, with this project comes workers, and with workers come man camps. With man camps, we see more and more missing and murdered indigenous women throughout Canada and throughout the U.S., really where any pipeline project is. That, my life would be at risk, as well as countless others. This project will have a huge impact on water rights and the environment. I have a three-year-old niece, and I want her to be able to play in the nearby woods without fear of running into a pipeline. I want her to be able to go to the local rivers and be able to swim without fear of pollution. This project will pollute our drinking water. Water is the base of life. Water is in you and me, it's in trees and animals. Without water, things would die. Things can't survive. This project needs to be denied because it is not in the best interest of us, the people, and the residents, and the people who will have to deal with the risk of contamination. I ask you, as a daughter, as a sister, as a cousin, a friend, and a niece, to deny this project. Deny this for the children who can't speak, and deny this for our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm, my name is Candace C A N D A C E. Chat. C H A T T. I'm a Coos Bay resident. We live near Charleston. My husband and I run a vacation rental, Bay Cove. I am totally opposed to this LNG terminal going in, and I'm hoping that you consider denying this request. But I feel that LNG terminal will be a black mark on Coos Bay's tourism. We should not represent our community as being willing participants in a project that promotes fossil fuels and all the climate-related problems associated with it. In addition to the well-known safety hazards of natural gas, no one ever discusses the potential foul-smelling air that could potentially spoil our wonderful fresh air that our community currently enjoys. Our guests, friends, and family that come to visit are here mainly for the recreation of crabbing, fishing, boating, kayaking, and paddleboarding on our beautiful waters of Coos Bay, the beautiful and tranquility of Charleston and the Coos Bay area. All of these activities are based on tides and weather, and interruption from an LNG tanker entering or leaving the bay will disrupt the plans of anyone using the bay for any purpose. In the four years that we have done this business, we have had over eight thousand guest nights, which we feel has been a big contribute to our community, and all of these guests, very seldom have we run across anybody that, when discussing this, is in favor of it. And we feel like they are looking to come to Coos Bay because we have several guests that have actually been looking for property to buy, and they are coming and wanting to come to Coos Bay because of the way it is now, today, and not what it would be like if an LNG would take place here. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Dodds. That's Kathy with a K and Dodds, D O D D S, and I live in North Bend. I strongly oppose the Jordan Cove liquefied natural gas and Pacific Connector Pipeline project, and would hope that DSL would deny this permit. An initial comment I'll make is that this DSL hearing should by rights wait until FERC has issued its final EIS, which is an analysis. The state of Oregon should change its statute to line up with California and Washington so that the state departments follow the FERC EIS to see if Jordan Cove project is even a viable one. After all, FERC has already denied this project twice. I have a strong concern about the denigration of the waterways along the proposed pipeline route, and especially in our Coos Bay. DSL needs to consider the public cost of dredging the waterways, the rivers, the bay because of the denigration of the water and environment. I am very concerned that toxins will be released into the water to adversely affect fish, salmon, oyster, and crab industries, as well as the recreation that are all the backbone of our economy in southern Oregon. The dredging sites mentioned in the Jordan Cove documents submitted allow that Jordan Cove Pipeline can literally drain a landowner's water or wetlands without notice. It is also true that Jordan Cove Project have not done adequate site geological testing. I fear that the crabbing in the bay and the fishing in the rivers that my family enjoys will be destroyed or very limited by the dredging, causing greater turbidity and digging in the waterways for this pipeline. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And ma'am, I want to let you know you are the second, at least the second person tonight who's asked about the FERC and EIS process and why we're moving forward first. So I have asked Ann to write that as a question that we will answer on our website for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, can I have you come forward, please, and the rest of you scoot down? I didn't count very well a while ago. Wasn't good in math. But we're going to get there. Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Robins Stroop. S U Z A N N R O B I N S S T R O U P. And I'm a new homeowner in Coos County, and we spent our life savings to move here to build a small home on the Coal Bank Slough. We came for health reasons and for affordable property. My partner had never lived near water before, and we purchased just a little boat for a hundred dollars so we could go on the bay. And now we're worried about whether we'll be able to go on the bay, and how many months of maybe our short life will we have where we won't be able to use it. If this permit is approved, we're afraid we're going to lose the crabs, the salmon, the trout, as others have said. And according to the Marine Biology Institute in Charleston, the oyster bays will be affected. So when I hear contradictions from one side saying, "Oh, the oyster bays will be perfect," and the other one says, "No, the oyster bays weren't," I get afraid. And when I'm afraid, then I don't feel good. We're both actively involved here in Coos County, my partner with the STEP program and myself with Human Rights Advocates of Coos County, and I believe if you look at the human rights, some of which are just to have simple housing, we don't have enough housing here as it is. Let's put a bunch of money into building houses. I also would like to see solar and wind power, and perhaps even water wheels, being developed instead of liquid natural gas. Thank you.
Audience, you are fantastic. Thank you.
Jamie Ferreday. Jamie Fer, F E R E D A Y. My submitted written comments will address fill and removal concerns such that they may help lead you to deny the permit by the applicant for Jordan Cove Energy Project. For more than a quarter century, I have been teaching the importance of estuaries and wetlands in general. I have labored with excitement and joy as a public educator here in Coos Bay, teaching twelve- and thirteen-year-olds life science. What better place for a biologist than next to an estuary, one of the richest of all areas on our planet? As it happens, the school, Millicoma Middle School, is adjacent to one of the last remaining original tidal salt marshes in the estuary. Actually, you have to walk about a half a mile across millions of cubic yards of dredge material fifteen to twenty feet thick to get to this marsh, but it did serve well as an outdoor classroom. The first of many facts is that Coos Estuary has lost from eighty-four to eighty-eight percent of its wetlands. We are eighty-four to eighty-eight percent. We are luckily second to Coquiao River Estuary, which has lost ninety-seven percent. And one of the lessons we have learned is that wetlands, especially tidal, are not easily replaceable because it involves ecosystem science, one of the most complicated of all sciences. In other words, compensatory mitigation is more daunting than rocket science. The applicant, Jordan Cove, has not convinced me that they are interested in the health of this estuary by their, by way of their casual treatment and overconfidence of compensatory mitigation. I believe that Jordan Cove, the Jordan Cove Project will result in wetland loss, more and continued disturbance to the water resources in the bay due to dredging and filling activities, and overall disturbance to local economies such as boating, fishing, crabbing, sailing, diving, and kayaking, some of which are tourism-based. I urge you and anyone here to visit the marsh at the end of Millicoma Marsh Trail, perhaps give you a perspective of the legacy of our estuary. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Hi. Awesome. And can you come? Here, lady, right here.
Anna Helms Landshunas. I am Millicus, Indiana member of the Confederate Tribes of the Coos, Lo Ram Qua, and Sayu Slaw Indians. E N N A H E L M S. As a linguistic major and language learner of the Coos languages, I feel it's important to say that a lot of our sacred sites and place names are based from verbs because our culture has always been tied to these lands and waterways. Names are descriptions of the land form itself or commemorate traditional ecological knowledge. Our kinship to the land is so intertwined with our language, culture, and identity. We still rely on having access to these places and resources, as do a lot of non-Native people that live here today. Our way of life is yet again being threatened. The further deepening, widening of the bay, a mild dredging project would change up the current flow and salinity, changing the ecology of a significant part of the bay. It would permanently destroy a ton of clam beds, fish, and other traditional foods, eel grass beds, and would destroy other significant, already hard-to-find basketry materials that rely on certain conditions and an ecosystem that will take thousands of years to restore. My kids will talk more about how this project is approved, how it will restrict access, be a direct loss of cultural materials and foods, which will contribute to the loss of our identity. In the last hundred and sixty years of colonialism, there has been mass destruction of sacred sites and burial grounds. While archaeological sites are left, would be impacted by an approval of this permit, creating new disturbances and erosions. Would like to ask you to deny this project. This project has me singing my chief's words daily. We will not fall down. We will not give up. We will not give up on our land. We have been here since time immemorial, and we will be here always as stewards of this land. Thank you.
So is your daughter behind you as well? Can I send her up, and you can go back and observe how well they do? All right, ma'am. You want to take the microphone? Can you speak? It's okay if you don't want to. Your sister can. It's okay. Why don't you try it first, and then she can think about it.
Raquel Landshunas. My name is spelled R A Q U E L. I am Millicus, a member of the Coos, Lo Ram Qua, and Sayu Slaw Indians. Currently, I live in Eugene, where I go to school, Spencer Beaufort Middle School. I would like to talk about the impacts this project would have on the food chain-like microorganisms that fish feed on. If you mess up the fish population, then the birds who eat the fish won't get enough food. People also rely on fish and other seafoods not only to eat, but people like going fishing. People come to Coos Bay for the views and access to the water. If this project is allowed to go forward, then that will mean less access to our homelands. This permit covers the bay and the slough, but it also impacts four-hundred-and-eighty-five different waterways in total that people and the animals all rely on. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. It's, honey, if you don't want to testify, you can give us your written testimony. It's okay, city, I have to. Jesus, Jesus. I'm going to take your, you need to take your type one and put it over here, okay? You didn't raise your hand. Standing up here. Sitting up here. Thank you. We're very proud of you. Very proud of you. You did wonderful, honey. So I'm going to put it with everything else, okay? All right. Good job. That was very good.
I don't very often let you applause in the middle of this, but I want you to applause these young women. I am so proud of our young people when they are brave enough to care so much about something to come forward and testify, and will take the written testimony of the young lady who couldn't testify, and I appreciate it. So no more applause until we reach the end and I tell you that you can do it one more time. So thank you, audience. You've been so very respectful tonight. I just, I can't tell you how much it means to me. I'm going to call up some more people, and this time I'm going to count the right way. Sam Sprague. Michael Graybill. Hannah, oh dear. Hannah, Hannah, oh dear. Rogue Climate Hannah. Sonal? Okay. You can figure it out. Come forward. Natalie Ranker. Dana Gabb. And Elizabeth Roberts. Okay. Hi. Oh, you've got one. There you go.
Thank you very much for bringing the hearings here to Coos Bay. My name is Steve Jansen. J A N S E N. I'm the elected county assessor, although I'm here to speak tonight as a private citizen. The, my expertise in the matter is the economic analysis of the whole project. Coos County right now is worth the real market value, is around ten billion dollars. By the end of the Jordan Cove build-out, it will add another ten billion dollars, so it will just about double the market value of Coos County. All that market value will pay property taxes. Property taxes predominantly stay within the county, and they fund cities, schools, county government, roads, taxing districts like drainage districts, and the, essentially, the money will all stay within Coos County. There's a, part of the concept of the enterprise zone is that the builder gets a tax break. That is, for a very finite amount of time. The Jordan Cove folks have asked only for the basic, two-year to build and three-year to run the place for a tax break. Everything else will be paid back into the community service fee, which will be divided out, still to be determined in what percentages to what agencies. But essentially, it's the same, whatever land the project is on and wherever the pipeline crosses, those lands will, their taxing districts will receive the benefit. So the, as I see it, the economic benefit to the area will be immediate with a loan from the company to pay upfront the needed infrastructure build-out, and it will go for, not in the duration of fifteen more years, but in perpetuity after the exemption is finished. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Mike, come on up. Go ahead.
My name is Sam Sprague. I'm a member of the Confederate Tribes of Coos, Lo Ram Qua, and Sayu Slaw Indians. Sprague. S P R A G U E. I'm Hanus Coos. My family is the Jordan family, for which the Cove is named. My family is the Jordan family, for which the Cove is named. The dredge and fill project, the permit that you hopefully will not allow Jordan Cove Energy Project to receive, will definitely impact negatively cultural resources inside the bay and, by a change of hydrology, cultural resources along the bay's edges. Eel grass is also a significant spawning area for herring, which is a traditional first food. There's a large eel grass bed at the site that will be dredged. Oregon is also known for its seabirds. The seabirds depend on these same eel grass beds, and the mitigation that has been offered up, as the gentleman earlier suggested, is not sufficient for what will be demolished. I would also like to speak about Pacific lamprey. Pacific lamprey are a lesser-known species that are a species of concern. There's not a lot known about them. They sustained our people, much like salmon, for thousands and thousands of years, and this project crossing four-hundred-and-eighty-five waterways under or through or over will be significant damage to the habitat for these creatures. They, they don't exactly have the best survival mechanisms. They stay in one place for seven years, and one dewatering event can completely wipe out a population. I'd also like to talk about horizontal drilling and the uncertainty with which horizontal drilling has been rampantly going on near water and documented leaks of said gas into water, contaminating water. I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have these if you would like to follow along.
Okay.
My name is Mike Graybill. I live in Charleston, and I'd like to thank you for this chance to provide comments. Dredging and filling involves earthwork and lots of it, and it sticks around. This estuary bears the scars of a hundred and fifty years of economic development projects that saw a need to dredge or drain or fill Kus Bay's wetlands and waterways. This estuary shoreline is scattered with wetlands stacked under dozens of feet of sediment dredged from the channel. Huge sections of the bay have been altered by past practices. This project is a proposal to change the bay yet again. Like many before it, this project will attack the shoreline and titans of the bay by digging yet another hole in the side of the estuary in the name of economic development. There's a pattern here. Economic development projects come and go, but the legacy of their earthwork and wetland impacts continues long after the benefits of the project are gone. This project is supposed to last twenty-five years, but the earthwork and the wetland impacts it brings will persist for centuries. In the future, this project will end, and its economic benefits will too. And when it ends, the only thing that will be left in Kus Bay will be the earthworks and the impacts to the wetlands it leaves behind. We need to end this time span, uh, this time where limited lifespan projects are granted permission to impact wetlands permanently. Fortunately, we now live in a time where wetlands can be restored, and fortunately, you have the authority to condition permits for removal and fill. I actually hope my written comments will give you the legal and ethical justifications you need to deny the permit, but if you have to issue a permit, I ask you place a condition on it. At the end of this project, after the benefits that were used to justify the impacts to Kus Bay's wetlands and waterways end, I ask that you require the permity to restore the wetlands impacted by this project to a pre-impact condition.
Hi, um, my name is Hannah Soul, H.A.N.N.A.H.S.O.H.L., and I have lived, um, in southern Oregon for most of my life. You can see the proposed route of the pipeline for my in-laws' front window, and, um, one of the, my favorite things to do at this time of year is to look for spawning steelhead in the small seasonal creeks in the Butte Falls area, um, many of which would be impacted by the construction of this project. Um, we, here in southern Oregon, we have had enough of a Canadian corporation coming into our home region and trying to divide our communities and destroy our quality of life for their short-term gain. Um, building trades workers, um, live in our communities, they're, they are our neighbors and our friends, and we want them to have jobs tackling climate change, speeding our transition to cleaner energy, and making our homes, businesses, and public buildings more energy-efficient. We want to be their allies in making sure, sure that our transition to clean, um, to a clean energy future is done, um, with, uh, union and done with good wages and working conditions. We do not want, um, our construction brothers and sisters to be told by big corporations and by our own state government that the only jobs open to them are the ones that will destroy, um, the future for, um, for their families and ours. Over the last fourteen years of this project, the Department of State Lands has had so many opportunities to stop this project because this project would do irreparable harm to our, um, water, to our waterways. Instead, the company has given extension after extension after extension, and at some point, um, you will have to choose if you are letting a Canadian corporation destroy, um, excuse me, the rivers, the streams, and the fish that we love and depend on, and then make our economy run and that sustain our families, or if you will be listening to the thousands of southern Oregon residents and countless across the state who are asking you to do everything in your power to stop it. We will be submitting, uh, substantial comments as well, but, uh, a few quick questions for DSL. Uh, when will DSL say that enough is enough and stop this project? Um, fourteen years is, is a long time to be having to fight this thing, and our communities need to move on and continue the work of transitioning to clean energy, work that I know will take time, but will also ensure that we are creating thousands of family wage jobs right here in southern Oregon. Second, how is DSL evaluating the potential fire risk of this project during construction and the possible impacts to our watersheds? Three, in the face of climate change, is this really the best use of our waterways? Waterways that are an important, um, parts, that are important parts of our local economies, of our clean drinking water, and that are already struggling and will continue to struggle more under the threat of climate change? And how is DSL evaluating the potential landslide risks of this project? Thank you.
Ma'am, I'm gonna call some other people up.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call up, two, three, four, five. Uh, boy, my hold is getting bad. All right, here we go. Uh, Rumaldo Grajeda, Robert Porter, John Paffel, Jim Jones, Gloria Cole. Great. Okay? Yes.
Thank you. My name is Natalie Ranker, N.A.T.A.L.I.E.R.A.N.K.E.R. I have many reasons for opposing this project. I will mention, I will mention just a few. Initially, five million, seven hundred thousand cubic yards will be dredged from the slip and access channel. There will also be periodic maintenance with dredging occurring every three years for the first ten and every five years after that. This will deposit a hundred fifteen thousand cubic yards every three years, a hundred sixty thousand cubic yards every five thereafter. This constant re-silting with what we do not know this silt contains will be detrimental to oysters, clams, crab larvae, and salmon fry. These resources bring millions of dollars to our local economy. Our Coho are endangered, as well as our steelhead and eight other species that Jordan Cove has reported. There was no salmon season last year for the first year in many due to lack of fish. Jordan Cove will drive one thousand piles for, for pile dykes to direct the flow of The noise from this, as well as the dredging, will be powerful enough to probably drive away many tourists at campgrounds on the North Spit. In twenty seventeen, there was two hundred seventy-one million dollars that came into Kus County in tourism. This is a far greater amount than Jordan Cove will ever provide. And perhaps the greatest problem that I see is what they say that they are doing with the mitigation of, of the Kentucky Golf Course. This is already a wetland. How can they create another? They will deposit foreign material in the spoils that could kill existing fauna and flora. Jordan Cove has either never thought of or does not care to address these problems. Then to add more insult, they're going to put the LNG pipeline right through the Kentucky wetland. There's never been a pipeline that does not leak, and Pacific Connector will not be the exception. This is not mitigation, it is more a destruction of another ecosystem.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, need the microphone?
Oh, yes, I guess you do.
You know, that happened twice last night, so don't feel like you're the only one.
I can try without.
Go ahead, welcome.
Dana Gabb, D.A.N.A.G.A.A.B. I arrived in, uh, Kus County in, uh, Kus Bay, North Bend in nineteen seventy-four. Uh, I didn't know a soul, but I soon settled in, uh, a little area called Crab Flats, which is one mile south of, uh, Empire on the Cape Arago Highway. Ended up with a little place, had a little woodshop, met some people in Crab Flats, an old timer, uh, took a liking to me, and, uh, asked if I'd be interested in going crabbing. And, uh, so, uh, he came by the next afternoon, uh, he had two buckets, a five-gallon bucket, no bait, no crab trap. Uh, we went out in the tide flats at low tide in the eelgrass, which was ubiquitous, and shoved the eelgrass aside and filled up our buckets with Dungeness crabs. Uh, by about ten years later, nineteen eighty-five, uh, the eelgrass was starting to, uh, be not as thick as it used to be. By, uh, two thousand, I would say it was mostly gone, maybe a few strands, kind of as many hairs as I have on the top of my head. Uh, I'd like to say that, uh, I don't really know why that took place, but I don't think it was natural selection. I believe that there were some environmental causes, and my suspicion is that the dredging had something to do with changing the habitat. Uh, human beings, our health and well-being is directly related to, uh, how we take care of everything that's around us, human and non-human, and, um, flora and fauna, and I think on a local level to a global level, we're not doing a very good job. Uh, please deny this permit.
Thank you, Sid.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Roberts, E.L.I.Z.A.B.E.T.H.R.O.B.E.R.T.S. I'm from Banden, Oregon. Uh, I also want to comment on the eelgrass, um, and the, some of the mitigation that was in the permit. Uh, yes, South Slough, uh, they've been doing eelgrass studies, and they have noticed a decline in the eelgrass, uh, population in the estuary, and the idea that you can create an eelgrass mitigation site is almost laughable considering South Slough, who's been studying this issue, has yet to be able to figure out how to do that. Um, I also want to discuss the, uh, mitigation site at the Kentucky Slough. Uh, this is a perfectly functioning wetland habitat that supports salmon, and they want to take dredge spoils and dump them in the slough and call it salmon restoration while running their pipeline through the mitigation site. That does not sound like mitigation to me, and I hope you will oppose and deny this, this permit. Um, oh, okay, sorry. Um, one of the reasons that, um, I am from, I grew up on the, the South Coast, and one of the reasons I moved back down here from Alaska was because this is one of a handful of places on the West Coast where you could still live a subsistence-style lifestyle, where you could hunt fish, clam, crab, and put food on your table, um, and I'd like to continue to see that happen for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, can you, make sure you spell that last name for us and talk that out to the people in the background. I can hear you.
Yes.
And my recording.
My name is Rumaldo Grajeda. I am a local two-ninety member, speller R.U.M.A.L.D.O., last name G.R.A.J.E.D.A. So to get to the point, first of all, I wanted to let the opposition know that I totally respect their views, uh, and I love this country because it's all about debate, that's what made it great, and that's what we're doing. So I wanted to make a point that Intel, which is one of the largest employers in Oregon, uh, runs a, a chemical plant, it is a chemical plant with a lot of dangerous chemicals like hydrofluoric acid, sulfuric acid, but the reason why it hasn't been, uh, ruining the environment over there is because it's done properly and with the technology that they can decades after decades more technology, and it's union-run, and we maintain that place. We replace the old piping, we keep it up to par, and that's why they haven't had any kind of catastrophic event there. So I want to make a point about that. I want to also talk about Ron Wyden, when I was at the last town hall meeting here in North Bend, and he did state, and he's the state legislator, that he was gonna do things the Oregon way, which is the right way, and that he wasn't gonna cut any corners or, or do anything. It sounded to me like they would, they would damage the environment, so I feel confident with what Ron Wyden said. I also wanted to talk about fossil fuels. Unfortunately, it's a sad fact, but fossil fuels have been around for a long time, and we use them every day from dish soap to, uh, uh, bacterial stuff, you know, that we use on our hands, and then, um, the asphalt that we drive on. So it's, it's not gonna go away, and we have taken coal out, Obama did a good job of that, and we've been using natural gas, and it burns clean, and also, it, it's not what you hear about. You hear about Exxon Valdez, you hear about Deepwater Horizon, that's where, but we've never had anything really, really bad that's happened to natural gas as far as I know. Then I wanted to say that, uh, we don't build blindly in the trade. Uh, everything that I've been on in twenty-nine years of my, of my trade, we've done, it's been responsible, I haven't seen any kind of accidents from those projects. Fineries that I've worked on in the projects that we did, there have been problems in refineries, but not the ones I, I worked on, and, uh, working at, uh, uh, solar plants and wind, wind plants, the bad thing is, there's always something bad. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Sid.
Uh, Robert Porter, P.O.R.T.E.R., local two-ninety president.
A little bit closer to your microphone.
Uh, I'm the local two-ninety president. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd also like to start out by thanking, uh, our veterans that fought before us to give us this opportunity that we have today. Without what they have done, we wouldn't be able to be here to debate. Wouldn't have the right to assemble. I'm here to talk about, we build things with great pride here in Oregon. We're union people, we're educated, we serve five years of apprenticeship, we go to school two nights a week. Our apprenticeship is eight thousand hours of on-the-job training before you ever turn out. We go to upgraded training to maintain our licenses every year, and we are the best-trained workforce in the world. We don't build things to fail. We x-ray our pipe wells, we, when, when, when our rigs cross the road, there's people there to wash those rigs, so we don't even transfer the dirt from one side of the road to the other. The dirt that's picked up, you look at it, they strain it, um, you know, the pipe is coated. We have archaeologists that look at things as, as the dirt's being moved. We don't just haphazardly go out here and want to destroy this planet. We talk about coal, and we talk about this coal power plant being the largest pollutant in the state. You know, this natural gas that's gonna be leaving here, that's gonna travel through that pipeline, is gonna be a bridge to get this China, the, get China and other Asia manufacturing facilities off of their coal. This is gonna help the environment in the long run, and I'm talking globally, I'm not talking about, you know, this stuff, this stuff is, is meant to go over there and be a bridge to go ahead and clean up this environment. These pollutants that we talk about, and the layers of ozone that we're destroying, don't have any borders. I think we found that out when this nuclear powerhouse went up over here in, in Japan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's John Pafford. I'm a resident here of Kus Bay, P.A., double F-O-R-D. I live here with my family. We enjoy the bay, we enjoy crabbing, we enjoy crabbing, clamming, kayaking. Uh, we know if these permits are issued, that this operator will be held to stringent material handling regulations, um, they'll be monitored, and they'll restore what they disturb. Me and my family support this project. Yeah, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Sid. Thank you for coming.
Anytime. Good evening, my name is Gloria Cole, G.L.O.R.I.A., last name Cole, C.O.L.E. I am a member of Surf Rider Foundation. I have lived in Kus Bay for fifteen years now, and I feel that I live in the most beautiful place on earth. I strongly oppose the Jordan Cove liquefied natural gas and Pacific Connector Pipeline proposed project because the proposed activities would likely harm Oregon's waters, resources, fishing, navigation, and public recreation, as well as increase the risk of public health and safety. The project will significantly degrade our rivers and streams and is not in the public interest. The Oregon Department of State Lands should deny the removal fill permit because Jordan Cove has failed to demonstrate that the project is consistent with the protection, conservation, and best use of Oregon's waters, that the project is a practical alternative with the least adverse impacts on water resources, and that the project does not reason, unreasonably interfere with the preservation of waters for navigation, fishing, or public recreation. Oregon DSL must fully evaluate alternatives to the project that will be less environmentally damaging. Specifically, I'm concerned about my future to recreate Kus Bay, to fish for salmon in the Lower Bay. Jordan Cove is proposing to remove seven point eight million tons of rock and dirt material per year. This will affect salmon and Dungeness crab habitat in the lower Kus Bay area. Jordan Cove proposes to dredge maintenance every three years after the initial two-year dredging of the navigational channel. Do you think this is gonna have an effect? Of course it will, on our salmon and crabbing habitat. They propose to blast bedrock. They will have major impacts on salmon, crabbing, and waterfowl in our area. I strongly believe that the Kentucky mitigation site... I strongly believe that the Kentucky mitigation site is a wrong place to do it. Kentucky Slough is currently a highly functioning wetland and currently functions as salmon habitat. This will be the biggest wetland impacted of this entire project. Jordan Cove Pembina is proposing to deposit dredge spoils from the lower bay, which is sand and silt, to Kentucky Slough, which consists of silt and clay, which is completely different soil type and does not belong in Kentucky Slough. Thank you.
Can you hold on, sir? I'm going to call up some boys who got distracted on that. Bill McCaffrey, Christine Moffett, Mitchell Ricker, Hans, and Karen Radke. And I cannot read his name. I'm going to try. James H., and your last name starts with F. James H. Frick? I can't read it. Okay, thank you. Come forward if you figured it out. All right, go for it.
My name is Jim Jones, J-I-M-J-O-N-E-S. And I'm a carpenter instructor at a pre-apprenticeship program. Come on, okay, a little bit closer. Thank you so much. Carpenter instructor at a pre-apprenticeship program. There's a lot of things. I was going to say that I've heard a lot of opinions tonight and what I've learned in my life is that there are facts to back up every opinion that we can have in here and there's a lot of different opinions in here. And there's a lot of different facts to back up every opinion that we have. Probably somewhere in the middle is where it's at. I'm a little bit pragmatic about stuff. What I do know about, I'm not an expert at estuaries or dredging or any of that kind of stuff, but what I do know about is training vocational students. I've had a lot of experience with that. The training for our youth to build this country, it takes, 92% of the training happens on the job. It doesn't happen in the classroom. It doesn't happen on that shop floor. It happens on the job. We need the work in order to train the workforce. We don't have enough workforce. Thank you very much.
If you could speak to your speaker just a little bit more. I really need you guys to be speaking a little bit louder. This microphone needs to be able to pick you up so we can get the transcript right.
My name is Bill McCaffrey. I'm a North Bend resident. It's M-C-C-A-F-F-R-E-E. I am a retired union electrician of 42 years in the electrical trade. And if Jordan Cove builds their plant here, the union electrical shops will lose a lot of their help to the Jordan Cove project due to the subsistence and travel pay of nearly $500 a week. The local jobs will go to outside contractors, like they have on some other jobs here, and a few local workers. After the Jordan facility, Jordan Cove facility is built, they'll put their main offices in the Portland area, not here. Jordan Cove is dishonest and it can't be trusted, as reflected in the FERC's March 11, 2016 order, page 16, footnote 45. FERC stated that the Pacific Connector's statement is misleading because of the facts presented in its cited cases. Jordan Cove is misleading the public here, saying they'll pay taxes to the county when the reality, they've applied for a 15-year tax abatement. Can we trust a selected, non-fue elected community members to distribute the subpar money that Jordan Cove would pay in lieu of real tax dollars? Jordan Cove has been buying off the decision-makers, like Commissioner John Sweet, who received $50,000 from Jordan Cove for his reelection bid last November. And planning directors in Coos County have been duped into gutting the county code in order to meet the project's criteria. Coos County is still receiving at least $25,000 a month in bribe money from Jordan Cove as a goodwill gesture for the use of their 12-inch natural gas pipeline. You won't have a lower bay to fish or crab in after they dredge the millions of cubic yards out of the bay for the huge ships, not to mention that they'll have the bay closed almost every high tide. And if you live on the pipeline route, they want your property, but you'll still have to pay the taxes.
I'm Christine Moffett. I live in Coos Bay, M-O-F-F-I-T-T. I'm, I want to thank Director Walker for hearing us today. I'm speaking on behalf of the members of the League of Women Voters of Coos County today. Our members and those from three other Oregon leagues stand in strong opposition to this project. Our opposition is based on our grassroots policy and resource studies. We conclude that the proposed project is not consistent with the protection, conservation, and best use of the water resources of the state. And we conclude that the activities proposed would interfere with the paramount policy to preserve waters for navigation, fishing, and public recreation. Millions of dollars from state, federal, and private sources have been spent to mitigate past mistakes and restore the function of our estuaries and rivers as habitat for fish and wildlife. The recovery of aquatic habitat in Coos Bay has been a focus for more than 25 years with good results. Among participants in the restoration is DSL's South Slough Estuarine Research Reserve, whose management policy includes maintaining and protecting the integrity of the estuary from alterations and activities within and beyond its boundaries. The economic value of tourism in Coos County is estimated at $260 million with fishing as the strongest contributor. The export of LNG by a foreign-owned company will not market Oregon products or Oregon natural resources. Instead, their estimated project life of 25 years will provide only short-term boom-and-bust jobs. Nowhere in the analysis of impacts are the CO2 emissions from the massive removal and fill. Our local fishers have already been affected by ocean acidification and toxic algae. For these reasons and others, we of the Coos County League of Women Voters urge DSL to deny the removal fill permit.
My name is Mitchell Ricker, M-I-T-C-H-E-L-L-R-I-C-K-E-R. And I live in St. Helens, Oregon, and I'm a former resident of Douglas County, with over 50% of my family still lives in Coos and Jackson County. This does affect me. I also represent the Oregon Southern Idaho District Council of Laborers and we support the Jordan Cove project. And we also urge that the permit be issued in a timely manner for it as time to start this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I am Hans Radke, R-A-D-T-K-E. Our family has lived on the Oregon coast since 1981. My work as a natural resource economist has been focused on analyzing natural resource trade-offs between alternative uses, usually called benefit-cost analysis. This has included marine resources, timber, agriculture, and so on. As I understand the Jordan Cove LNG project, as I tried to understand it, I have searched without success for an independent economic analysis done by the state of Oregon. There should be an analysis done that includes an examination of the supply as well as demand for LNG. On the supply side, I am reminded of work that I did in the Russian Far East a decade ago to evaluate salmon production. In 2008, when I was in Sakhalin Island, a large LNG production and export facility was being constructed. Now it comes out that this is doing a real harm to salmon production in this Sakhalin Island. That is a real cost. On the demand side, we would be competing with Sakhalin production. I urge that an independent economic analysis be done before this is permitted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Karen Radke, K-A-R-I-N-R-A-D-T-K-E, and I live north of Florence in Plain County. I have lived there for the past 35 years. I'd like to begin by quoting our U.S. Senator Jeff Merkley, with whom I agree. He said last year, "I love the possibility of the Jordan Cove project creating so many good jobs, but I cannot turn away from the knowledge that, like other large-scale fossil fuel projects, Jordan Cove will contribute massively to pollution that is profoundly damaging our state and our world." Since this project was first announced in 2012, global energy markets have evolved and solar and wind alternatives to fossil fuel are very competitive. A construction industry that is based on the demands of a clean energy economy can create so many good jobs in Oregon and reduce carbon pollution. The Oregon Legislature will be moving forward this year with a Clean Energy Jobs Bill. So let us support this Oregon plan to create jobs, not a project that, like Jordan Cove, that is by a Canadian company wanting to export a carbon-polluting fossil fuel to Asia. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And can you wait for a second? I'm going to call some folks up. Excuse me. Jeff Harms, Stacy Yoxwayone Parrish. Oh, I didn't do well at that, so when you come up, please say it correctly. Amanda Jackson, Todd Templeton, and I'm going to get a senior in here, Sue Lee.
My husband's a senior.
Who's a senior?
My husband.
Well, I have Sue Lee signed up.
Yeah, I signed up. She's the senior.
Okay, I'm just going down my list. I'll get to the folks. But if Sue wants to testify, please come forward. Christine Sharagraw and Darcy Grayheck. Okay, where are we? Ma'am, over here. Thank you.
My name, my name is James Freire, F-R-E-I-R-E. I have a background in oilfield construction and I have a degree in chemistry. I have some brief statements and some questions. First of all, I would like to make this committee, this panel, aware of a study done by Pam Blake of the DEQ during the Clinton administration studying the effects of dredging in Coos Bay. The effects are extremely negative. They unleash toxic heavy metals from former industries and other economic development projects into the water that persists for a period, extended period of time post-dredging. The idea that you're going to take dredged material out of the bay and put it somewhere and mitigate anything is frankly absurd. You're adding heavy metals to the environment, not mitigating anything. The other thing I'd like to say is man camps, 6,000 outside employees. There's going to be a man camp in Coos Bay. I ask that the people involved in Coos Bay talk to the people in the Dakotas about man camps, about the extended exacerbated prostitution and drugs that come with them. And finally, I'd like to bring up the fact that this area is unique in more ways than one and it has been targeted for its ignorance on fossil fuels by this company. During a conversation with a county representative during the campaign season, there are five experimental coal seam gas drawdown wells in the county operating right now. They pump water out of the ground and I asked pointedly, has there been an analysis of this water? Where is it going and how has it been treated? It was not known and that water has been released in Davis Slough. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hi, welcome.
Hello. My name is Stacy Parrish, P-A-R-R-I-S-H.
Can you say your Indian name that you put down here?
Pardon?
Can you say this name that you put down here?
Yes, my Klamath name is Gia Yoxwayone, which means Strong Medicine Woman.
Thank you. You did better than I did. That's beautiful. Thank you.
So my name is Stacy Parrish and I'm here with my four-year-old son, Blue Parrish. We are proud Klamath tribal members and we flew here from Denver, Colorado, to speak out in opposition of this pipeline and to defend our tribe's sacred lands that will be ruined if this pipeline goes through. I don't want my homeland of Oregon to become Colorado, a state wrecked by the liquefied natural gas industry. So I'll tell you how it is wrecking my state. So in the state of Colorado, we have more than 60,000 active fracking wells. In Adams County, a suburb of Denver, there are more than 600 wells, some as close to 800 feet to public schools. Each well takes up to 7 to 11 million gallons of water to enter the earth to break up the bedrock needed to release natural gas. Colorado is a state entirely dependent on our snow melt, a continuously depleting water supply thanks to climate change, and in my homelands of the Klamath basin, water is in short supply. My child's name, his Klamath name is Getzgani Gilas Hoches, which is a medicine name, and he will be called when he comes of age to go to sacred sites to take up sacred water to be used in my tribe's ceremonies. To just hurrah about job creation is not unfamiliar to my indigenous people. People a few hundred years ago beheaded Captain Jack, leader of the Modocs, slaughtered the buffalo, and murdered millions of indigenous people under the smokescreen of a robust economy, job creation, and progress. Deny the permits of the LNG or deny my child of his ancestral homelands and deny him of the right to practice his religion of gathering sacred water in his sacred lands for use in ceremony. Oppose the LNG. Remember, big oil is the patriarchy and big oil is the proliferation of white supremacy.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
I second everything she said, too.
Get that all close so we can all hear.
Hi, my name is Amanda Jackson. I'm a Klamath tribal member as well. A-M-A-N-D-A-J-A-C-K-S-O-N. It's an honor to be here today and speak on behalf of my family, friends, and everyone that couldn't be here today. I'm going to keep this simple, but out of respect for my children and yours and many generations to come, that y'all take a moment to stop and think about everything that this pipeline will affect. Our water, our trees, the wildlife, the fish, and our natural way of life. For in the, for in the end, money and greed can only get you so far, but after it's lost its value, then what do we have left? It is our time to come together and unite as people to do our part to protect what we have left on this earth, to learn and live with the land and not off of it. There's a difference. For in this time, if we don't contribute to this world in a positive way for our children, wildlife, and start restoring things naturally, who will? Please think about this. It's important in so many ways. You can't sit before us all and promise that this pipeline won't have a negative effect on everything because it will, just by everything that it changes in our land and that's disturbed in order to put it in. Changes in our environment that you can't take back. Will you be able to stand before my children and yours and look them in the eyes and light them by saying that you couldn't have prevented this or that you think that this was what was best for them? I'm a hunter, a fisher, a tracker, and I gather. And this is something traditional ways that my children, I can proudly say that they carry this on as well. And if we don't do what we can to protect or preserve our environment now, then it's lost. When's enough enough? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Todd Templeton, T-O-D-V-T-E-M-P-L-E-T-O-N. Thank you for an opportunity to comment. I was surprised to hear actually how many people commented on apprenticeship and everything, so I'll be short. But this is something that we talk about, this project on our current job sites. We have over 500 apprentices. This is future jobs for them. We can build it the best, the safest, and at the highest quality. Please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. And you're with Local 290?
Local 290.
Okay. Thank you. Hi.
I really need the microphone here to pick it up for the computer.
You bet. My name is Jeff Harms. I am a representative for the Pacific Northwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I'm a carpenter myself, and I represent carpenters in Lane and Coos County.
Try talking to the end of the microphone, see if that works.
And I'm obviously not a...
There we go.
Not a singer, so.
Okay, try again.
Again, my name is Jeff Harms. I'm a representative for the Carpenters Union, Pacific Northwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I represent carpenters in Lane County and Coos County. This is a very important project for us. I'm an Oregonian as well, and I really appreciate the fact that you folks are here, listening to the voices of all of us Oregonians, and I appreciate all of us Oregonians being here to peacefully speak our minds. This project is a $10 billion investment into Southern Oregon, which includes $60 million in new tax revenue for Southern Oregon. This is going to bring 6,000 family wage jobs, 250 permanent jobs, and an estimated 8,500 supporting jobs. These are jobs that Southern Oregon needs. I want to focus a little bit on the environmental impact, because a lot of people have. I want to mention that everything that we do impacts the environment. Mr. Bradbury said that the largest producer of greenhouse gases in this state is Boardman. That is true. They are the single largest, but the largest producer of greenhouse gases in Oregon is transportation, and I think we all weighed the cost of that environmental impact to get here tonight. I look around the room, and I see smartphones in almost everybody's hand. We have all weighed the cost, the environmental cost, that those devices cost us, and we've all decided that that's worth the environmental impact. Those things are disposable. The lithium, the cobalt, the other fine metals that we use to build those phones also harm waterways where they're mined. We all choose that, we all choose that environmental impact. We all choose our own convenience over that environmental impact. Electric cars and transportation. Electric cars is a great bridge to the future, and I think they're necessary, but the batteries that power those electric cars are just as dirty as fossil fuels. And it looks like my time is up. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, come on up, ma'am, and then I'm going to call some folks if I can.
All right. I need to get a couple of seniors here. And I tried those in a J- impacted landowner I'd like to hear from as well. Let's see. John Neikirk. Bonnie Joyce. Kim Palmer. Rachel Richardson. And then where is the impacted property owner?
Are you taking written testimony here?
Great. Impacted property owner, you will, oh, here you go. Todd Gorman. And it looks like I can take one more. Stephen Woods. Steve Woods.
Sorry about that interruption. Welcome.
My name is Sue Lee. And I have been in Coos Bay for two months.
Two months?
Two months.
Okay.
But let me explain. I lived in Grants Pass for 16 years of my adult life. My daughter was born there. I always wanted to move to Coos Bay. I went to take care of my father when he died, my mother when she died. I met my husband down in California. We moved to Tucson to be with his parents. We took care of his parents, and they both died. So in the sunset of my life, after taking care of these people, I, we decided to return to the most beautiful place on earth, and that's Coos Bay. And we love water sports and the fish and the birds and nature, kayaking, sailing, all those things, and we are now terrified of the impact that Jordan Cove and the pipeline is going to have on the beautiful waterways here. It's not just the dredging, it is redredging and all the other impacts that are involved. I would urge you to look at online. I've been following the Virginia Pipeline with Dominion Energy and all of the accidents and impacts that have happened so far, and they have a map posted of the United States of all of the accidents that have been involving pipelines, and the whole country is just dotted with red dots of impacts that have happened. I watched the tides flow in and out here in the bay. We were fortunate to get property near the bay, and there's an amazing amount of energy that could be harnessed with those tides rather than going with something that's really dirty, and it's only going to delay what's going on in China. They're going to go back and finish up all their coal, even if they do switch to LNG for a while. Okay, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome to the Oregon coast.
Oh, thank you.
It is beautiful here. It is. It's gorgeous. Come up? There you go. Whenever you want.
I'm Christine Shangraw, a member of Surf Rider. I've lived in Empire overlooking the Coos Bay shipping channel in the North Spit for 25 years. I windsurf, kiteboard, surf, kayak, and stand-up paddleboard in that property. I primarily launch from the Empire Boat Ramp in the south end of the North Spit. As a neighbor, I'm very concerned that the dredging project will include drilling, blasting, and pile driving 24/7 for an expected six years to move 6 million cubic yards of debris. This is abusive. It's abusive to the population living along that eight-mile stretch. This includes several thousand human beings, aquatic life, including whales, birds, as well as the elk and the wild boar that inhabit the North Spit. This extended and consistent noise level will permanently disrupt the life cycle of the entire geographic area. As a frequent non-motorized recreation user of the shipping channel, I know how strong that bay and ocean current is right now during tidal changes. It's only accessible at high tide. I'm strongly concerned about the geographic restructuring of the navigation channel, primarily straightening, deepening, and widening. That's going to increase the velocity of the current during tidal ingress and egress. I also believe that maintenance dredging will result in scouring of the bottom, causing an increase in wave action within the channel itself. This increase in ocean bay current velocity and wave action and not being able to launch at high tide will virtually eliminate all non-motorized recreation and sport on the impacted area. In closing, I believe that it will permanently interfere with the navigation, fishing, and public recreation on this waterway. Please do the right thing and deny Jordan Cove this removal fill permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep moving down and come forward. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for having us speak today. My name is Darcy Grahek. I'm a lifelong Oregonian and have lived for 30 years on the south coast. Currently, I reside in Banden. I strongly oppose the Jordan Cove liquefied natural gas and Pacific Connector Pipeline project. Specifically, the waters of Coos Bay are a nursery for a wide range of species of fish, crocodiles, and other arthropods. For thousands of years, people have thrived on the bounty of these waters. Our current fisheries are supported by healthy waters that have not been compromised by the dredge and fill being proposed. Are we willing to trade the ancient estuary resources of Coos River for a limited number of jobs? My husband is a welder for many of the fishing boats based in Charleston and fishing boats in other places. Many livelihoods depend on our healthy fishery, maybe for a long time, maybe seven generations. Please deny this permit.
My name is John Neikirk. I'm a 40-plus-year resident of Coos Bay Estuary. I live above the Haynes Inlet Tributary, which two main creeks pollute, and was one that represent a large salmon breeding ground, and the dredging within that estuary in that section is going to impact by the fat produced by the Oregon fishing game of a salmon rookery or a place where they grow up, basically, of over 2 million fish per year. This has been documented. But I'm going to point out that the turnaround dredging spot for the terminal for Jordan Cove is at the prime spot where ocean-going salmon come and stop every year to acclimate to the fresh water. This is one of the largest sport fishing areas on the Oregon coast, with hundreds of boats gathering there in that very location, because that is where thousands of salmon stop and stay for approximately three to four days to adjust to the freshwater, the brackish water, and then they travel on into the streams. We have many fish that need to be protected, and also commercial and sport fishery needs to be protected also. So doing this dredging within the bay is going to definitely deter fishermen and fish stock. Also, the added turbulence and power of the... Thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you could hand her the mic, and that would be wonderful, and thank you for coming.
So I should be close to the microphone?
That would be great, if you guys could speak just a little bit closer.
Yeah. No problem.
Now, take your read. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello. Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Bonnie Joyce. I've been a forested landowner in Coos County for getting close to 50 years.
Wow.
First off, I want to say that it wasn't too long ago, I think maybe eight or so years ago, that local officials wanting to amp up the economics of this area invited a, invited a group to come in, it was a group from an architects, to come into the area and do some analyses and let us know some ideas. And they said, "You have a beautiful natural setting here that is highly desirable. And protect your natural environment. Avoid the extractive industries," was their conclusion. Okay. First off, it seems pretty obvious that this project, which has been denied previous permits by DSL, is only now being submitted again because the new administration and president are ignorant and unconcerned about the damage to our atmosphere and climate caused by the continued development and use of fossil fuels, as well as other causes, of course, especially as regards the recent report from climate scientists that gives an explicit warning. If we do not effectively reduce carbon emissions by 2030, we will most likely render our planet uninhabitable for future generations. The climate issue is pertinent to this removal fill permit because the damage caused by the digging, dredging, and disposal of fill in the lower bay and along the entire pipeline will be made worse by the rising temperatures. Do I have another minute?
No. First past, my dear. I'm so sorry.
Ah! I barely got started.
I know. It goes by quickly, but we'll take your written testimony. I'm happy to take your written testimony and put it in here if you would like.
I'm going to write it. This is a draft, and I'm going to do a better job.
Okay. But we really enjoyed your two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Should I start now?
Yes, please.
I'm Tim Palmer. T-I-M-P-A-L-M-E-R. In the course of my career as a writer and photographer focusing on the waters and landscape of Oregon, I've been fortunate to know firsthand our great rivers, including the Klamath, Rogue, Umquah, Coquill, and Coos. These are fabulous resources that many of us here in Southern Oregon depend upon, though they are all stressed by warming temperatures, turbidity, and pollution. We've worked hard to restore our salmon here, and the last thing we need is damage from a pipeline that would be felt at 485 sites along these waterways. DSL should not be licensing the unavoidable harm that would occur with crossings, removal of shading vegetation, erosion in steep topography and unstable soils, and the entire route's extreme exposure to intensifying storms, floods, and fires. Any approval would assume that there'd be no accidents or violations of permits, but Reuters recently reported that two pipelines in eastern U.S. have caused 800 permit violations. Even without the expected infractions, we can't afford the risks. DSL is obligated to protect our waters and land. The department has no obligation to prioritize the profits of a foreign corporation shipping America's energy resources to Asia in ways that will impair our own resources and homes. The Governor's Executive Order 1720 also recognizes the need to address climate change. State agencies cannot do that, allowing the largest contributor to global warming in Oregon history to go forward. With this approval, 48 billion cubic feet of natural gas would be burned over a 30-year period with worldwide effects on our climate. Because a methane leaks, natural gas is actually worse than coal as a greenhouse gas. Putting our waters, land, and homes at risk in this 230-mile swath across Oregon is not the way for DSL to meet its obligations to the public. I urge you to disapprove this application.
You should have been in radio. Your voice is very good for radio.
Yes. Hi. My name is Todd Gergen. And I'm a lifelong Oregon coast resident and business owner. Currently, I serve as co-president of Boost Southern Oregon, a local organization of business owners, organized labor, and citizens in full support of the Jordan Cove Energy Project's removal and fill permit application, under consideration by your agency today. I am also president-elect for the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, which represents over 500 local businesses. Our chamber board of directors has deemed the Jordan Cove Energy Project one or two, one of two critically important developments our area needs. This project will provide thousands of construction jobs and hundreds of direct and indirect jobs, once operational, permanent jobs. The fees in lieu of taxes generated by this project will help fund vital services and infrastructure, projects for our county, port, schools, and area taxing districts. With that said, I wish to address the application on the merits today. My family owns property on the North Spit near the proposed Jordan Cove LNG project site. We also own three parcels within the Haynes Inlet water body. In addition, my family has a long history as south coast fishermen in the commercial crab and fishing industries. We care about protecting our natural resources and trust that the Oregon Division of State Lands will structure and condition any permit granted to the project to do the same. Our understanding is that the Kentucky Coho Restoration Project, being funded by the applicants, will increase Coho's salmon habitat by approximately 100 acres and greatly exceeds the minimum mitigation requirements for this permit. We believe the extraordinary efforts taken by the applicant to exceed these mitigation requirements is in good faith and demonstrates to us, as affected property owners, that any adverse conditions resulting from their planned dredging activities will be minimal and temporary. For these reasons, we wish to go on record as being strongly in favor of the Oregon Division of State Lands granting this permit, with terms and conditions where protect the state's resources. One final thing I'd like to say, some of the testimony tonight has talked about global warming. There was a study published in Nature Conservancy, Nature Sustainability Magazine in September studying the effects of switching coal out... of switching coal out for natural gas power generation in Asia, specifically China. And there is significant benefits for water scarcity, to preserve water, keep particulate emission in the air down, as well as global warming. The greenhouse gas effects can be beneficial by switching off of coal to natural gas. Thank you.
Sir, if you could hold on, I'm going to call up some more folks. Ma'am, you want to come forward? All right, let's see if I can have... Barb Shamet, Bob Sprowell, George Wells, Rick Skinner, Scott Jansen, I don't hear from Scott already. I think that was Heather Jameson. And Margaret Barber. Okay, thank you.
My name is Stephen Woods, I live in Coos Bay, Oregon. I've lived here my whole life and worked here. I started working on the water in 1972. I've piloted in Coos Bay since 1986. And I also, well, I pilot on the Columbia River from Astoria up, and I've been there for 20 years piloting there. So I pilot Coos Bay, Yaquena Bay, Columbia River. And I've heard a lot of stuff tonight as far as what's happening as far as the ship coming in. I've been involved with the studies done from the ground up from 2007 on to bringing these, the feasibility studies of bringing these ships in. Once we showed that it was feasible with the existing channel, as it's with its depth, we went to the next step, and that was to what can we do to improve the channel, make it safer? What we were going to need for tugs, and what we were going to do with the security zone. The security zone is a moving security zone, and the people won't be shoved off the bay while the ship is transiting. But they will evaluate if there's a threat and keep them from getting in within that zone. On the Columbia River, we have ships all the time that come in that have security zones. No one's forced off the bay, nobody's, that's not been a problem. The turn-in basin will actually be the barge slip that they're going to build, as our process has been the last few times, is to keep the bow of the ship even out of the existing channel. At this point, we've been turning ships around in that area for the chip ships since 1968 or whatever, when they put in the barge dock. So that's all I have as far as what to say, but I hope to see that the permit goes through for putting in the barge slip.
My dad was a seaway pilot, proud to shake your hand.
Thank you. Come on up, ma'am.
Rachel Richardson, North Bend. I'm a business person, I own a small real estate brokerage in Oregon's Bay Area, the jewel of the southern Oregon coast, and I'm also on the tourism committee. For most folks, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. For me, this is the second time. I was born and raised in upstate New York and was there when the St. Lawrence Seaway Project was built. For those of us with families, this means our kids will stay here and grow their families here. Please approve the project.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. You're the shortest testimony tonight. All right, come on up. We're closing... Lloyd. We're closing on our timing, about 15 minutes left. Obviously, I'm not getting all of you folks. Can you guys move down? Two, four, six. I'm going to call up a few more. Oh, okay, you're telling me the time. Okay, let's see, I've got to cross off the ones that are called up. Dominic De Piero, Terry Greer, I think, yes, Terry Greer. Let's get a seat here, Teresa Rialle or Teresa Rig. I can't tell. Okay. Take it away, ma'am.
Do I press this to speak?
It should be ready to go. But I really need you to face this direction.
Oh, okay.
Hi, let's build windmills. My name's Barb Shamet, 45 years, my family lives and works on the water. I am totally against this project. I am representing fishing and recreation industries and the rivers and the oceans and the world. We have two boats and some kayaks right here in the bay where the LNG wants to dredge. Quote, "All navigable waters of the state shall be common highways and forever free, as well as to the inhabitants of said state and to all of the citizens of the United States." That's Section 2, Act of Congress, 1859, February 14th, admitting Oregon into the Union. LNG represents a violation of our public water rights, our public right of way on Oregon waters, and it is a poor use of such waters. Further, LNG is the antithesis of our protected species in the Salmon Restoration Recovery Plan and is a violation of the Federal Endangered Species Act. According to this department, the U.S. Department of Fish and Wildlife, blast and drilling will release polychlorinated biphenols, PCBs, which bind to disturbed sediments and are highly toxic to fish and other aquatic life, and will cause dramatic and devastation to our salmon. Tankers in and out of the harbor will release 600 million gallons of water upon entry and exit, and further endangering conditions for this cold-water fish, thereby putting the last nail in the coffin for our fishing industry here in Charleston. It's actually a step backwards, the U.S. Department of Fish and Wildlife says. This LNG permit will cripple, maim, destroy, and destroy our ecotourist industry, displacing many workers. Presently, there are proposals to build offshore wind farms on southern Oregon's border along with northern California. Let our union members build those. I am a retired union worker as well. Windmills don't blow up, they don't leak gas or oil, they don't cause massive catastrophic fire or poison our airs, our waters, and our atmosphere. Fishermen come up the west work where I live from way out of, from Montana, and they will not come if there are no fish where they're supposed to be spawning. With intent to harm, LNG is knowingly and with intent to harm, is in violation of Oregon statutes, ORS 196.825, 1A, 1B, 2A, 3A, 3D, and 3E, the Clean Air, Clean Water Act, and we intend to pursue these violations should this permit be granted. Thank you.
Come on up, ma'am. Okay, I hear a couple people pushing the envelope, let's get through tonight. Sir.
Hi, my name's George Wales, G-E-O-R-T-E.
You've got us beat way up.
W-A-L-E-S.
Perfect.
I'm also a ship pilot in Coos Bay and Yaquena Bay. These removal fill would put some safety, increase the safety of shipping in the bay, not only for the LNG but also for the existing traffic that we have now. These are small areas that they're going to remove the material from, but to make it safer also for the barge traffic coming and going. It would also increase the windows that we can operate the vessels safely. That's about all I got, so.
All right, thank you. Ma'am, next.
My name's Bob Sprowell, S-P-R-O-U-L. I'm opposed to the pipeline for personal reasons. The pipeline will go right next to my property. Instead of looking up at the hills, I will have the nice, well-managed private timberlands, I will be looking at a permanent clear cut through our forest. I cannot understand how a foreign company can come and put a 200-mile clear cut through our national forest and plow through our rivers that we've paid a high price environmentally and economically, socially, to protect. These, much of these lands are very unstable, and I can't believe there's not going to be a huge amount of erosions when they do put these, this pipeline in. Also, I believe my property values will go down when the pipeline is, goes through, so I hope you deny this permit.
Thank you, sir. Hand the microphone, please. Ma'am, are you going to come up? I am, but they were sitting here versed in a crowd.
That's okay.
Come on. I think we'll get to all of you.
My name's Rick Skinner, S-K-I-N-N-E-R. I'm a third-generation resident of Coos Bay, North Bend area. I wear a lot of different hats in the community. I am a vice chair of the Southwest Area Commission on Transportation. I'm the vice president of the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce, Government Affairs, and Economic Development. I chair the South Coast Development Council, and I co-chair Boost Southern Oregon. I really feel like this project is a one-in-a-lifetime project for our Bay Area. I really feel like the project specifications for DSL meets its regulations, and the people that I represent, the 500 businesses and thousands of members in those businesses, all are in favor of this project. Thank you very much.
Sir, you sure do a lot of volunteering. All right, ma'am, come forward, and ma'am, go ahead.
My name is Terry Greer, T-E-R-I-G-R-I-E-R, and I'm a citizen here in North Bend, and I have a house in the East Bay just past the Connect area that you're looking at. My background is in rural economic development. I've spent about 20 years working in public policy, and a great deal of it was spent working on issues such as this. One of the reasons why I moved here was specifically because of my health. So making sure that we have clean air and clean resources is not only important in general, but it's important to me. One of the reasons why I think that when you're looking at the dredging issue, I took a course when I first came here, and it was on the history of this area. And they had pictures of pre-World War II and post-World War II where ships were lining the entire bay. Traditionally and historically, this has been an export bay, and it's been one of the deep-water bays. But unfortunately, because of the decline in the economy, they haven't been able to export what they had done in many years. When you fall below a certain level of exporting, then you lose the opportunity and the benefits to have the support from the federal government to be able to dredge and maintain your port. And so the port has been placed in a precarious situation because the tonnage has fallen below that level. LNG and the other ancillary projects that will come along with it will place us in a level in which we will receive federal support to be able to maintain our bay as a deep-water port. I know that there have been many questions regarding the dredging, but historically, we have had dredging and we have had large ships in here. So looking at those historical data points and looking at our wildlife, our oysters, our crabs and those things, and looking at that impact, I think will help you as you make your decision. I also think that LNG has done, they have tried to negotiate, in all fairness and all honesty, I appreciate what the indigenous community had to say, and I hope that that's also considered. And I thank you for your time. I've been on the other side of the table, so.
Yes, I know that, thank you very much. It's always courageous to run through office. Come on up, sir. Ma'am, I realize that you can't get close to this microphone.
I can't keep my hands close against, around anything for very long.
Do you need me to hold this for you?
I can do that. I can't stretch.
You have problems, I have problems. Here, I will get close.
I can't read, it's over the paper.
Okay, how about that?
I can't see the paper.
Okay.
I don't know.
Well, ma'am, I really want you to have the opportunity here.
This side, is that better? Yeah, that is. My name is Teresa Rig. I have been here 52 years. I live in Coos Bay, about six blocks straight up here. I want to digress right off the top because I'm hearing how much cleaner gas is. I was diagnosed beginning in the 70s with chemical allergies. I had just put gas in my house, and ever since then, doctors from Portland here have pointed out to me that gas is far more dangerous than the pollution from either coal or oil because it is not particulate, you can't sweep it up and you can't filter it out. That said, I'm going to return to my plan. I can't believe we're even here for this because I have been told that the reason for a new permit, and if this is wrong, forgive me, is because they want to use bigger ships which would increase their profit by one-half percent. At 99.5% of the profit, I think it's asking way too much of us to disrupt and ruin perhaps forever what we have here for a half percent profit. I am concerned, and especially living up here, that the long-term disruption for 8.3 miles of pipeline and the dredging, which would go on for 40 to 50 days, the dredging for three, every three years, which is going to include pile driving and a lot of vibration and noise, will affect our landscape. I'm wondering if we will have landslides. The hill and many areas here are riddled with coal mines, and I want to see if there is a geological study. If not, I think there should be a geological study to see if this plus the change in wave action will affect residents and stability and who will pay for it if it does. Along that vein, the mitigation for the eelgrass enough, it's been said about that, along with the changed waterways and wave action, could affect and undercut our long runway or cause it to flood under certain conditions. If the airport is put out of action, it will not help Coos Bay. Who would pay for that?
Okay, and ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
And I'm so glad that I got to help you give your testimony tonight. Working together, we can get it done.
Get me out of here.
Hi, my name is Scott Jansen.
Get up there a little closer.
A little closer?
Perfect.
My name is Scott Jansen, and I am supporting the Jordan Cove Project. I grew up here and moved away when I was about 23 years old, 45 now, and I moved away because there was no work and there was no real economy down here, and I would really like this to happen. I'd really like to move back here, and I love this town, I think it's awesome. I think it'd be a real shot in the arm if this project happened. It's not close enough yet.
Well, yeah, it's pretty close because I got two more people and I've got two minutes.
Okay, well, then...
Can you say one more sentence?
Thank you very much.
That works. Thank you, sir. Okay, you two, I'm going to have you split a minute apiece, okay? Because we need to be fair, like all the other hearings, and stop at eight. So, sir, come on up and have a seat. So should I just hand you the microphone or we can keep going?
My name is Margaret Barber. I work with the Oregon International Port of Coos Bay. I'm here this evening to voice my support for Jordan Cove and Pacific Connector and encourage the Department of State Lands to approve the subject removal fill permit. I believe that Jordan Cove has met the requirements set forth under ODSL regulations and that water resources will not be unnecessarily impacted. Further, I do not anticipate significant interference to navigation or the recreational and commercial fishing industries. The Jordan Cove team has engaged numerous entities and individuals in southwestern Oregon for more than a decade, including fishing, oyster cultivation, and clamming stakeholders. These efforts have been made to conceptualize additional involuntary and required mitigation to avoid impacts to these sensitive environmental populations. Jordan Cove has engaged directly with port staff, terminal operations, the Harbor Safety Advisory Committee, and the Coast Guard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I couldn't give you both two minutes.
All right, my name is Dominic De Piero, D-O-M-I-N-I-C, De Piero, D-E, capital P, I-E-R-O. I live in Florence, I've been, lived in Florence my whole life. Scuba dive, fish, hunt, and everything around here, and I can tell you on behalf of the local 290 members that are here and everybody else, we love this place. We want it to be protected. We want the pipeline built in the right way, we want the terminal built in the right way. Right now, I'm employed in Coos Bay, and I love working here. We spend our whole lives piping things. Right now, I'm responsible for the air that you breathe in the hospital, the oxygen, nitrous oxide, those types of things. We already do that type of work on a bigger scale. That's what we do for a living, we take pride in that, and I hope that we can build the cleanest, safest pipeline and set the standard for how pipelines are supposed to be built and do a great thing for the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, so... All right, thank you, sir. All right, so, that brings us to the end of our hearing. I'm not going to close it out just yet because I've got a couple of things that we're going to go over. But right now, you have been so wonderful at not interrupting for the most part. Could you please give yourselves a round of applause for being a great audience? And Bob Lobdel, could you please come forward? I'm sorry, guys, but I need him up here to talk to the audience for a few minutes. Come on up, Bob. So, again, I want to thank you. I listened intently. I took notes. That's the way I process things. He also organized this all transcribed. But for me, it was important to take notes so I could sort of have a few key sentences that each of you brought to the table, and each and every one of you brought very good comments to the table tonight, and I appreciate it. If you did not get a chance to testify, you can still submit your testimony. Please, we do read it. Send it to us by email, mail your facts on the yellow comment card, or send it on your own comment paper. But remember, the deadline is February 3 at 5:00 p.m. If you wait too long and you're working on it and your computer stops working at 5:01 and you try to submit, we won't take it. So please, please try to get it done in time. I know I was applying for a job one time and I, my computer didn't work, and I needed to get the job, of course, but it's important that you do that. I want Bob to tell you about the next step, because I've been asked that a lot. How long will it take for us to make a decision? What happens once we make a decision? What is the kind of decision that we'll make? So I'm going to let Bob show you that with you. Oh, you have one?
Not to be put on the spot without warning, that's okay. So the public comment period will close on February 3. As of today, I think we've got between 5,500 and 5,600 on the computer anyway, and a few thousand comments. Once the comment period closes on the 3rd of February, I'm going to be reviewing a little bit before then to try to get ahead. And then I've got to go through every single comment that's come in to identify substantive issues to the rebuild and fill up, impacts to weapons of water to the state. From that, as soon as that is completed, I will be putting basically an issues letter that'll go towards the company, towards Jordan Cove app, and they will have an opportunity to address that. Now, our deadline currently, I believe, is March 5. Sorry, not very good with my phone. So, March 5, 2019, and I believe that will be extended because it's going to take me several weeks to go through the comments, and I'm sure it's going to take them a bit of time to address the issues as well. And from there, basically, we will be going through their response, and if there may be some back and forth to work on issues, we really don't know until I get through the first review.
Great. Do any of you have any questions of either Bob or myself before I close the hearing officially tonight? Yes, sir?
I thought when you started, you had said that you were the sole person to make the decision. Is that just for this meeting? Can you sit up here?
No. The question he's asked is, when I started, I said I would be the sole person making the decision on this permit, and that is correct. It's not just for this meeting, but not holding this meeting. I will make the decision for the department. I'm the department director. Bob will provide me and other staff, Eric in the back, will provide me with information. We will sit down for several hours, and I will go over the application and Bob's proposed response. And we may have some back and forth between us, but in the end, my name is on that document that either approves or denies the application. Any other questions? I think I have. Over here, ma'am.
When was the last time your agency disapproved this application?
We've.
And were you, and were you part of the lands department at that time?
I'll let Bob answer the first one, and I'll answer the second part.
The first answer is, we've never got to a permanent decision on Jordan Cove or Pacific Connector gas pipelines allocations. They were withdrawn prior to your decision.
And I became director on March 1, so I have not been involved prior to that time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And is there a question over here? I think I, yes, ma'am, in the back.
Is Kate Brown or Twyus Green going to have any input on this and rest of the state land board's behalf?
The question is, is the land board going to have any input on this decision and the answer? If no, there is a legal memorandum I put together that I prepared with our legal counsel in May, and it is on our website. It explains why the land board doesn't have any role in this removal fill permit. You're welcome. Other questions? Yes, sir?
A question, maybe I missed it. How was the selection process with speakers done when I was at random? Because, go first, come first, first?
How was the selection process made? I had to alter it a little with each hearing because it was clear I was not getting enough people who had not had an opportunity to speak. So we went through the list, and we crossed off people who had previously spoken and put them at the bottom. We never got to the bottom. I also tried to prioritize the elders and the disabled, and then I also tried to make sure that I had a mix of people who supported and opposed, and especially, I needed to hear from affected landowners. So as we got towards the end of the hearing, when it became clear I was not going to hear from everyone, I didn't go in the first-in, first-served order. I just, I needed to provide some variety so that I got more information. Yes, ma'am?
Just a quick procedural question. I didn't want to yell from the back.
Right.
The comments are unlimited. Comment per person is two minutes. Is it also possible, when you're speaking, if you get to the end of the two minutes, but you have more to say, that you can ask or have the person next to you see their two minutes to you, they don't speak, and you finish whatever it is that you've been saying?
She's asking if you can cede your time to someone else. That happened once. I can't remember which hearing. I let it go because we didn't say in advance that you couldn't do that. I wasn't quite comfortable with that because it gave one person four minutes to just really talk a lot, and there were so many people in the room. I didn't hear any of that tonight.
So it's not part of Teri's or Robert's rules of order?
No, it's really up to me whether it's, it's not a part of any kind of Robert's rules of order. It's really whether I'm going to permit it. And I let that happen once. I'm not sure I can do it again, but no one asked tonight, so we didn't have to get there. One more question, because I wasn't going to do a big question and answer. I was just going to do a couple. Ma'am?
How did you proceed with picking this venue?
How did we proceed with picking this venue? Well, a lot of people didn't want us, so, and you can imagine why. This can be disruptive to a business. We had asked the college last time. I understood that we had hearings and the college refused. We also had it at the North Bend Library, and that was way too small. That was before my time. And so in terms of the largest type of venue here in Coos County, we're kind of limited. So that's why we chose this location. Any, any other process question? Okay, reminder that if you have real substantive, substantive questions of any kind, and I made some notes tonight, I asked ma'am to write down a couple of questions on the green card. Please take a green card. Write in your questions. We really want you to participate as much as you can. The next hearing, the final hearing, is in Salem next Tuesday, same time. It'll be at the Veterans Office Building right across the street from the Department of State Lands. It actually doesn't hold a lot of people, but it was more conducive to this process. So it was the best that we could do in Salem without spending a lot of money renting places because this comes, this money that we spend to rent all these places is coming out of the Common School Fund. So we're very cognizant of saving dollars there. But we did want to give you all an opportunity to speak, and I just want to thank you again. Being someone who grew up here, I am proud to be from southern, the southwest Oregon coast, and you may be proud tonight. So thank you very much, and have a safe flight home.
Thank you so much. I'll, yeah, I'll be there. ...gases. I was diagnosed beginning in the 70s with chemical allergies. I had just put gas in my house, and ever since then, doctors from Portland here have pointed out to me that gas is far more dangerous than the pollution from either coal or oil because it is not particulate. You can't sweep it up, and you can't filter it out. That said, I'm going to return to my plan. I can't believe we're even here for this because I had been told that the reason for a new permit, and if this is wrong, forgive me, is because they want to use bigger ships, which would increase their profit by one-half percent. At 99.5% of the profit, I think it's asking way too much of us to disrupt and ruin perhaps forever what we have here for a half-percent profit. I am concerned, and especially living up here, that the, that the long-term disruption for 8.3 miles of pipeline and the dredging, which would go on for 40 to 50 days, the dredging for three, every three years, which is going to include pile driving and a lot of vibration and noise, will affect our landscape. I'm wondering if we will have landslides. The hill and many areas here are riddled with coal mines, and I want to see if there is a geological study. If not, I think there should be a geological study to see if this plus the change in wave action will affect residents and stability and who will pay for it. If it does, along that vein, the mitigation for the eelgrass enough has been said about that, along with the changed waterways and wave action could affect and undercut our long runway or cause it to flood under certain conditions. If the airport is put out of action, it will not help Coos Bay. Who would pay for that?
Okay, and ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
And I'm so glad that I got to help you give your testimony tonight. Working together, we can get it done.
Get me out of here.
Hi, my name is Scott Jansen. Aye?
Get up there a little closer.
A little closer?
Perfect.
My name is Scott Jansen, and I am supporting the Jordan Cove Project. I grew up here and moved away when I was about 23 years old, 45 now, and I moved away because there was no work and there was no real economy down here, and I would really like this to happen. I'd really like to move back here, and I love this town. I think it's awesome. I think it'd be a real shot in the arm if this, this project happened. It's not close enough yet.
There you go. Well, yeah, it's pretty close because I got two more people and I've got two minutes.
Okay, well then.
Can you say one more sentence?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, you two, I'm going to have you split a minute apiece, okay? Because we need to be fair, like all the other hearings, and stop at eight. So, sir, come on up and have a seat. So should we just hand you the microphone, or we can keep going?
My name, my name is Margaret Barber. I work with the Oregon International Port of Coos Bay. I'm here this evening to voice my support for Jordan Cove and Pacific Connector and encourage the Department of State Lands to approve the subject removal fill permit. I believe that Jordan Cove has met the requirements set forth under ODSL regulations and that water resources will not be unnecessarily impacted. Further, I do not anticipate significant interference to navigation or the recreational and commercial fishing industries. The Jordan Cove team has engaged numerous entities and individuals in southwestern Oregon for more than a decade, including fishing, oyster cultivation, and clamming stakeholders. These efforts have been made to conceptualize additional involuntary and required mitigation to avoid impacts to these sensitive environmental populations. Jordan Cove has engaged directly with port staff, terminal operations, the Harbor Safety Advisory Committee, and the Coast Guard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sorry, I couldn't give you both two minutes.
All right, my name is Dominic DiPiero, D-O-M-I-N-I-C, DiPiero, D-E, capital P, I-E-R-O. I live in Florence. I've been, lived in Florence my whole life. Scuba dive, fish, hunt, and everything around here. And I can tell you on behalf of the local 290 members that are here and everybody else, we love this place. We want it to be protected. We want the pipeline built in the right way. We want the terminal built in the right way. Right now, I'm employed in Coos Bay, and I love working here. I'm, we spend our whole lives piping things. Right now, I'm responsible for the air that you breathe in the hospital, the oxygen, nitrous oxide, those types of things. We already do that type of work on a bigger scale. That's what we do for a living. We take pride in that, and I hope that we can build the cleanest, safest pipeline and set the standard for how pipelines are supposed to be built and do a great thing for the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, so, that brings us to the end of our hearing. I'm not going to close it out just yet because I've got a couple of things that we're going to go over. But right now, you have been so wonderful at not interrupting for the most part. Could you please give yourselves a round of applause for being a great audience? And Bob Lobdel, could you please come forward? I'm sorry, guys, but I need him up here to talk to the audience for a few minutes. Come on up, Bob. So, again, I want to thank you. I listened intently. I took notes. That's the way I process things. He also organized this all transcribed. But for me, it was important to take notes so I could sort of have a few key sentences that each of you brought to the table, and each and every one of you brought very good comments to the table tonight, and I appreciate it. If you did not get a chance to testify, you can still submit your testimony. Please, we do read it. Send it to us by email, mail your facts on the yellow comment card, or send it on your own comment paper. But remember, the deadline is February 3 at 5:00 p.m. If you wait too long and you're working on it and your computer stops working at 5:01 and you try to submit, we won't take it. So please, please try to get it done in time. I know I was applying for a job one time and I, my computer didn't work, and I needed to get the job, of course, but it's important that you do that. I want Bob to tell you about the next step, because I've been asked that a lot. How long will it take for us to make a decision? What happens once we make a decision? What is the kind of decision that we'll make? So I'm going to let Bob show you that with you. Oh, you have one?
Not to be put on the spot without warning, that's okay. So the public comment period will close on February 3. As of today, I think we've got between 5,500 and 5,600 on the computer anyway, and a few thousand comments. Once the comment period closes on the 3rd of February, I'm going to be reviewing a little bit before then to try to get ahead. And then I've got to go through every single comment that's come in to identify substantive issues to the rebuild and fill up, impacts to weapons of water to the state. From that, as soon as that is completed, I will be putting basically an issues letter that'll go towards the company, towards Jordan Cove app, and they will have an opportunity to address that. Now, our deadline currently, I believe, is March 5. Sorry, not very good with my phone. So, March 5, 2019, and I believe that will be extended because it's going to take me several weeks to go through the comments, and I'm sure it's going to take them a bit of time to address the issues as well. And from there, basically, we will be going through their response, and if there may be some back and forth to work on issues, we really don't know until I get through the first review.
Great. Do any of you have any questions of either Bob or myself before I close the hearing officially tonight? Yes, sir?
I thought when you started, you had said that you were the sole person to make the decision. Is that just for this meeting? Can you sit up here?
No. The question he's asked is, when I started, I said I would be the sole person making the decision on this permit, and that is correct. It's not just for this meeting, but not holding this meeting. I will make the decision for the department. I'm the department director. Bob will provide me and other staff, Eric in the back, will provide me with information. We will sit down for several hours, and I will go over the application and Bob's proposed response. And we may have some back and forth between us, but in the end, my name is on that document that either approves or denies the application. Any other questions? I think I have. Over here, ma'am.
When was the last time your agency disapproved this application?
We've.
And were you, and were you part of the lands department at that time?
I'll let Bob answer the first one, and I'll answer the second part. I'll let Bob answer the first one, and then I'll answer the second part.
The first answer is, we never got to a permit decision on Jordan Cove or Pacific Connector gas pipelines applications they were withdrawing prior to a decision.
And I became director on March 1, so I have not been involved prior to that time.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And is there a question over here? I think I, yes, ma'am, in the back.
Is Kate Brown or Dwight Sprecher going to have any input on this and the rest of the state land board staff?
The question is, is the land board going to have any input on this decision? And the answer is no. There is a legal memorandum I put together that I prepared with our legal counsel in May, and it is on our website that explains why the land board doesn't have any role in this removal fill permit. You're welcome. Other questions? Yes, sir.
A question, maybe I missed it. How was the selection process with teachers done tonight? Was that random because, or did it go first, come first, first?
How was the selection process made? I had to alter it a little with each hearing because it was clear I was not getting enough people who had not had an opportunity to speak. So we went through the list, and we crossed off people who had previously spoken and put them at the bottom. We never got to the bottom. I also tried to prioritize the elders and the disabled, and then I also tried to make sure that I had a mix of people who supported and opposed, and especially, I needed to hear from affected landowners. So as we got towards the end of the hearing, when it became clear I was not going to hear from everyone, I didn't go in the first-in, first-serve order. I just, I needed to provide some variety so that I got more information. Yes, ma'am?
Just a quick procedural question. I didn't want to yell from the back.
Right.
The comments are unlimited. Comment per person to two minutes. Is it also possible, when you're speaking, if you get to the end of the two minutes, but you have more to say, that you can ask or have the person next to you cede their two minutes to you, they don't speak, and you finish whatever it is that you've been saying?
She's asking if you can cede your time to someone else. That happened once. I can't remember which hearing. I let it go because we didn't say in advance that you couldn't do that. I wasn't quite comfortable with that because it gave one person four minutes to just really talk a lot, and there were so many people in the room. I didn't hear any of that tonight.
So it's not part of the territory or...
No, it's really up to me whether it's, it's not a part of any kind of Robert's Rules of Order. It's really whether I'm going to permit it, and I let that happen once, and I'm not sure I can do it again, but no one asked tonight, so we didn't have to get there. One more question, because I wasn't going to do a big question and answer. I was just going to do a couple. Ma'am?
How did you proceed with picking this venue?
How did we proceed with picking this venue? Well, a lot of people didn't want us, so, and you can imagine why. This can be disruptive to a business. We had asked the college last time, I understood, that we had hearings and the college refused. We also had it at the North End Library, and that was way too small. That was before my time, and so in terms of the largest type of venue here in Coos County, we're kind of limited, so that's why we chose this location. Any other process question? Okay, reminder that if you have real substantive questions of any kind, and I made some notes tonight, I asked ma'am to write down a couple of questions on the green card. Please take a green card. Write in your questions. We really want you to participate as much as you can. The next hearing, the final hearing, is in Salem next Tuesday, same time. It'll be at the Veterans Office Building right across the street from the Department of State Lands. It actually doesn't hold a lot of people, but it was more conducive to this process. So it was the best that we could do in Salem without spending a lot of money renting places because this comes, this money that we spend to rent all these places is coming out of the Common School Fund. So we're very cognizant of saving dollars there. But we did want to give you all an opportunity to speak, and I just want to thank you again for being someone who grew up here. I am proud to be from southern, the southwest Oregon coast, and you made me proud tonight. So thank you very much, and have a safe drive home.
Thank you so much. Thank you, ma'am.
So it was the best that we could do in Salem without spending a lot of money renting places because this comes, this money that we spend to rent all these places is coming out of the Common School Fund. So we're very cognizant of saving dollars there. But we did want to give you all an opportunity to speak, and I just want to thank you again for being someone who grew up here. I am proud to be from southern, the southwest Oregon coast, and you made me proud tonight. So thank you very much, and have a safe drive home.